Thank you all for coming out on this wonderful evening. I appreciate your being here and taking the time to meet with us. As you know from prior sessions, we're targeting this as our final portion of the public hearing, and we're allotting roughly three hours, I'll say it, to 9:30 p.m. to wrap up any and all comments on the CEA North Shore Crossing project. Following that, we'll, assuming the board is in agreement, end the public hearing, close the public hearing, and we will have a special meeting scheduled for the 24th, two weeks from tonight, at which this board, having deliberated on everything it's heard and received and seen during these public hearings, will have a discussion and will come to a vote. So that's the plan, and hopefully we'll be able to satisfy those requirements tonight. We do have other business after this, so we'd need to allot some time for that. Our hope is to be finished with this meeting in total by 10:30. So as far as the CEA project portion is concerned, the hearing is now reopened, and we're going to ask people, as before, to sign the sheets. If you haven't already done so and you want to speak, please sign one of the sheets over there, and we'll have people come up in the order in which they have signed up. Yeah, let's have a motion to waive the reading of the public notice. It's been moved. Seconded? All in favor? Okay, motion passes. So it looks like we have -- we have 14 speakers. I would ask people to try to keep your comments to five minutes or less. So Mr. Guanci is number one on our list, and following him will be Dan Foley.
Thank you Chairman Thompson and members of the planning board, Ms. Ambonati. My name is Paul Guanci, and I'm currently city council president here in Beverly. I live at 54 Cross Lane in the Beverly Cove neighborhood. First, I want to thank the members of the planning board for all the time and effort they put into reviewing this project, as well as everything else through the years. And of course, it's all on a volunteer basis. I'd also like to thank the representatives from the CEA group for their presentations and their professionalism during the public hearing process. I'm confident that whatever goes into that site, if CEA is involved, it'll be very attractive. During my time of having the honor of serving on the Beverly City Council, I've always been supportive of appropriate commercial and industrial development in areas where it is zoned, and have only appeared before the planning board a handful of times to voice my concerns. Subjectively, I could stand before you tonight and be opposed to this project wearing a number of different hats. First, as a small downtown business owner, I have concerns about this project, that it will make it much more difficult for residents of North Beverly to access different parts of the city. I'm also worried about the impact of this development will have on longstanding community-based and committed businesses that have been part of Beverly for many years. This is strictly my opinion, but I believe that the sale of Henry's Market partially had to do with the proposed project. We've heard that Whole Foods will be a wonderful partner to everything in the city, but Henry Swanson and John Cohen have been wonderful partners for decades, and they were never on a pedestal and wanted to be recognized. As a Beverly Cove resident who uses Exit 19 to access 128 and beyond, it will be much more difficult to use that exit to enter and to leave the city. I envision this proposal, should it move forward, creating unmanageable traffic in other areas of the city, especially Exit 18 and Centerville. While these concerns may be considered personal, my main concern is what this type of development will do to the surrounding neighborhoods. As everyone knows, the city's zoning ordinance dealing with special permits lists a set of conditions that need to be considered before moving forward on granting a special permit. The three that stand out for me are that the specific site is an appropriate location for the proposed use, and that the character of the adjoining uses will not be adversely affected. I think that the character of Northridge next door may be affected. Two, that no factual evidence is found that property values in the district will be adversely affected by such use. You could try asking somebody who wanted to sell their house on Route 1A after all the development went in. Number three, that no undue traffic and no nuisance or unreasonable hazard will result. I think the traffic will be overwhelming. I ask the members of the planning board to consider these three criteria before granting a decision on a special permit, respectfully. In closing, I'm supportive of the traffic improvements that the state is paying for, and I'm supportive of the parcel being developed. Actually, I've always envisioned one of Beverly's downtown auto ship dealerships for that site, and even spoke with Thomas Ford years ago, I think 2002 or 2003, or the type of development that lines Tozer Road as an alternative to the current proposal. While I applaud the members of the CEA group for pledging $200,000 toward traffic improvements on both ends of Brimble Ave., the actual costs, of course, will be far greater. Too busy intersections, two sets of train tracks, development on Dunham Road without highway access or regress, all add to possible traffic issues that will surround and overwhelm the neighborhood for years to come. I'd like to say a special thank you to Ward 5 Counselor Dawn Martin for putting his constituents first on there and always being available. Thank you.
Following him will be Louis Bourgeois.
Never done this before, so I think I have the mic right. I want to thank the planning board in the city for the opportunity to speak tonight and express my opinions about this proposed development. I especially want to thank Commissioner Thompson for being so gracious to everybody during this whole process. I really mean that. I'm a lifelong resident of Beverly, and I live at Brimble Hills Drive. I've lived at Brimble Hills Drive for 20 years, and I grew up over by Wyndham Lake, so I've been around for a while. And I have two daughters. They're twins, they just turned 14. They attend Briscoe Middle School, and we anticipate they'll be in the high school next year, so that's me. I'm here tonight to voice my opposition to the proposed North Shore Crossing/Whole Foods development at 140 Brimble Ave. I'm well aware that new commercial development is needed in this city as the city tries to expand its commercial tax base to generate new revenue. I appreciate the fact that my daughters will be able to attend a beautiful high school, and I know that that wasn't easy to come by. I also believe that all new development in this city, in any city, must be done in a way that protects the character of our neighborhoods and does not negatively impact property values. But I'm not too concerned about my property value. I could honestly care less. I'm concerned about our quality of life, and that's why I'm here. I think that this development has a potential to diminish our quality of life, which is precious and coveted to so many of us here. We know the location of the proposed development is in the middle of a residential neighborhood, North Beverly in Montserrat, to be exact. The area is comprised of approximately 1,000 households, multiple tree-lined streets, two middle schools, an important hospital, ambulance services, and a high school which isn't too far down the street. As Counsel Guanci said, it's already a nightmare in the morning trying to access the high school in Hannah and North Beverly from Exit 19. I didn't realize it until the other day, I was sitting in my office at home, and I saw cars turning around at the end of my street. I'd never seen it before, and those are cars that were trying to avoid the left turn and then go back right to get to school faster. I got to move this along. North Shore Crossing/Whole Foods, in my opinion, is a wolf in sheep's clothing. It looks nice and like it fits in the architects' drawings compared to more traditional retail plazas. It's still a retail plaza with a destination grocery store. We all know the negative impacts that these types of developments have on neighborhoods and cities, and I don't think that those negative impacts can be swept under the rug in exchange for more tax dollars. I don't want to talk too much about traffic, but the various traffic studies confirm this proposed development will add significant volumes of traffic to our precious neighborhoods every day. The only ones I've heard who have said or written that traffic volumes are not significant are Mr. Cohen, the developer in the Salem News. It's well-known fact that excess traffic and its side effects can harm neighborhoods. You don't need to look at the studies. You've heard my neighbors' stories about it, and they're telling you the truth. It's fact-based. Again, we care deeply about the quality of our lives, and we're going to fight to protect it. Congestion backups, air pollution, and noise pollution all compromise the character of our neighborhoods and city. It degrades one's quality of life. The remedial traffic measures proposed here are incomplete and concerning. One example, there are many more, is that they do not address the worst intersection in Beverly, which is the Laurel Dodge intersection. We all know that new traffic from this proposed development will have a devastating negative effect on this intersection, and nobody knows what to do about it. No one knows the cost to correct it. Who's going to pay for it? Traveling it every day, I don't think it can be fixed. I can just imagine the mess the new traffic will have on this intersection, which already fairly regularly backs up to Walnut Street, especially when the trains come through. Those neighbors in that area will not be able to safely exit their driveways with these new volumes, and will have to breathe in the exhaust and absorb the noise from idling cars. The proposed stoplights and road ridings will also have the same effect on my neighbors in the south side of Brimble, and I sympathize for them. I don't believe any tax-paying citizen of the city should have to endure this. I believe it's extreme and an undue burden. Lastly, there are also many documented problems with the design of the proposed development. It does not seem to fit properly into this parcel. I understand design changes occur almost weekly, and it's still a work in progress. One of the most serious issues is the lack of a third, second and third approved entry point. The proposed locations of the new Connector Road and Sawyer Road, Mass DOT had previously denied access on Sawyer Road primarily due to safety issues, from what I understand. The proposed entry exit point onto the Connector Road creates a whole new set of safety issues that involve state approval. I am simply perplexed that the parking and traffic quickly signed off on these proposed access sites, because one of the main purposes of the interchange project was to improve safety. Another potential problem is the proposed development may lack the necessary number of parking spaces to serve businesses. This could become the neighbors' problem, is waiting cars and forced to back out under Brimble Ave., creating additional congestion while waiting to park. It happens at many of our Nine Duncan Donuts when cars are backing up into the drive-throughs. I don't want to be a narcissist with these issues. I believe it's going to negatively impact the whole city, and especially our neighborhood. These are just a few of the negative impacts associated with this proposed development. There are many unresolved, I believe there are many unresolved and unknowns with this development. I know you're all experienced planning board members who serve our city well. You have a difficult job to do. I know you're all aware of the six principles in place to help guide good planning decisions. Quickly reviewing these principles for guidance myself, it's my own personal opinion that the proposed, rather, the fact support that the proposed development is unduly burdensome to the neighbors and the city as a whole, and that the negatives fire away the positives. I'd hope that this parcel would be developed in a different way and in a better way that fits the city. My own personal opinion in concluding is that if this is approved, it's simply for tax dollars. That's my own personal opinion. Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Mr. Bourgeois, and then Catherine Myers.
Louis Bourgeois, 9 Walnut Avenue. I just got a couple of things. I'll be quick. I'm very disappointed with the representation that we're getting for North Beverly, because most of the members of the planning board do not live in North Beverly, and I know one person that does, and she lives on the other side of the tracks, so to speak. Also, the traffic park commission, no representation from North Beverly there. So it's kind of disappointing to have all these outsiders making decisions for the folks out here that are fighting to save the quality of our neighborhood. The McKay School got representation from Mr. Ladder, and he spoke in favor of that neighborhood, and we sold the school for $500,000, what we could have gotten it for. So obviously, there are some people that care about their neighborhoods, and they're part of town. Unfortunately, nobody's doing it for us here. Mr. Martin is doing the best he can. I appreciate it, Mr. Guanci speaking earlier, helping us out. So, you know, I wrote a letter to the mayor last week, and I'm very disappointed, because I did not get a response from the Beverly Police Department, but I witnessed an air hit on my street. A girl on a bicycle almost got hit by a car, and it was somebody very impatiently waiting in traffic on Brimble, Budley Ave., backed up, and they decided to shoot up my street, and the young girl was coming out of a driveway, and the car almost hit her, and I witnessed that. And I tell you what, it was very, very frightening, and I just pray to God that there's no child gets killed in this city or anyplace else. You know, these children are too precious, and, you know, if you people can't value the safety of these children, you know, I never had a child, but if I ever lose one, I tell you what, may the blood be on your hands if you make a decision to allow all this traffic to happen.
Next up is Catherine Myers, followed by Rick Mooney.
Catherine Myers, 176 Cullen Street. Mr. Thompson, members of the planning board. I respectfully request that you deny CEA group's request for a special permit. I've been following this project since it first came before the city council in September 2013. I've attended that meeting at Beverly High School and every meeting concerning this project that has followed. I, like you, have been reading all the documents and viewing all the plans for this project. In addition, as the leader and organizer of the Montserrat Neighborhood Group, I have followed my neighbors' concerns and comments with persevering attention. My understanding is in order for a special permit to be granted, it must meet all six of the criteria posted on the city of Beverly's website. Page 19, number nine. As far as I can tell, CEA group's request to place the Whole Foods and other retail establishments in this location meet none of them. I want to specifically draw your attention to three of these criteria. It is very clear that it does not meet the third criteria, quote, "that no undue traffic and no nuisance or unreasonable hazard will result," end quote. Nor does it meet the fifth criteria, quote, "that there are no valid objections from abutting property owners based on demonstrable fact," end quote. In addition, I think anyone who owns property in this area realizes, quote, "property values in the district will be adversely affected," end quote. That's criteria number two. The planning board's directive is to vote to these criteria and only these criteria. This is not about the dollars and jobs a Whole Food will contribute to Beverly's economy, or what a good neighbor they can be, or any number of other reasons that advocates for this project have put forth. I continue to hold on to my trust and hope that you will continue to do your job as directed by the instructions given to you in this city document. A great truth attributed to Emily Dickinson is, "hope inspires the good to reveal itself." It is not, if not now, when? Now is the time that good reveals itself in city planning. I want to thank you for your diligent, conscientious, and untiring consideration of this important matter. Thank you.
Mr. Mooney?
Mr. Chairman, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Rest of the board. I would like to address three of the six criteria used by the planning board to determine if North Shore Crossing will be granted a special permit. The first criteria is the specific site is an appropriate location for the proposed use, and that the character of adjoining uses will not be adversely affected. This is not an appropriate site for a shopping plaza. This junction is where traffic should be efficiently disseminated to the different parts of town. This plaza will defeat that purpose, disrupting the flow to already established commercial areas such as Tozer and Dunham Road, not to mention Beverly Hospital. More immediate is the impact on our neighbors in Northridge. Once quiet, they will now have to fight to get in, fight to get out of their property. Foot traffic will be more difficult. We have two schools to consider. Our children deserve better. They deserve what their parents came to North Beverly for. The second point, that no factual evidence is found that property values in the district will be adversely affected by such use. I believe that the property values will be affected, and as a reference, I would like to call your attention to remarks made by a citizen in Linfield, Joe DeMena. It could be found on a Linfield website. I believe you all have copies of this letter, so you should, you know, you've got the link. In the excerpt read, "A realtor recently told him that because of the traffic, his home would be valued at $100,000 less than otherwise. That's bad for him and bad for other homeowners across town and for the town itself." I would also like to point out that 360 Walnut Street in Linfield, near the marketplace, home to Whole Foods, went on the market in June of 2014 at 540K and had its asking price reduced every month until it finally sold for 465K this January. I wonder how many realtors would waste their resources trying to sell a home that they knew was overpriced by almost $100,000? None, none that I know. I ask each of you on the planning board, would you buy a home on Brimble Ave.? Would the people living on Brimble Ave. now repurchase their homes if they knew what was coming? I would not. I want no part of the noise, the traffic, and the litter that come along with every plaza. We already have an established business community in the immediate area and a tremendous commercial property inventory that, if leased to their full potential, will only add to the mess. Why hurt the established community for a shopping plaza that we do not want? Will the tax revenue from this project offset what Beverly will lose in the value of the homes in the area? Why would we not support the four markets we already have? The restaurants currently vying for business, the local banks, all currently taxpayers to the city of Beverly? We owe them our consideration. As a partial list of commercial space, I have a partial list of available commercial space for lease in and around North Beverly. It amounts to almost half a million square feet of leasable space. I have addresses in square footage, but I'm not going to go into them. It's in the letter that I sent to you. Okay, the third criteria I wish to address is the undue traffic, no nuisance or unreasonable hazard will result. I'm still worried about the response times for the police fire and ambulance into the neighborhoods in North Beverly. There is an ambulance service right on Brimble Ave. near the proposed plaza. Increased traffic can only mean increased response times. They will fight their way through only enough to fight their way back to Beverly Hospital, unless, of course, we can schedule our emergencies for off-peak hours. By all interpretations of the various traffic reports, the intersection at Laurel Dodge and 1A will not improve. No stop signs or traffic signal will remove the chaos at this intersection. More cars will only exacerbate the problem. Running the stop sign and blocking traffic in the intersection and on the railroad tracks will continue to make traveling through there more difficult. You must consider the impact this bottleneck has on the area. I find it unreasonable to expect the neighborhoods to absorb the impact the backups will cause for those of us who live there. Currently, the Linfield neighborhoods adjacent to the Marketplace Plaza are experiencing problems with delivery trucks not obeying the "no trucks allowed" signs that were supposed to protect them from some of the traffic. No matter how many times the town or individual businesses speak to them, they continue to make their deliveries in the quickest, most direct routes available, even if illegal. I have doubts as to whether Northridge can be protected from what appears will be a forever battle with early deliveries, pollution, both air and noise. Thank you.
I appreciate everybody wants to applaud their spokespeople, but we don't need the applause. Ms. Myers.
Thank you.
And following, I'm sorry, would be Michael Wogan.
Paulette Meisens, and I'm 11 Walnut Avenue, and I do appreciate the opportunity to be able to speak. Just because a developer requests a special permit does not mean that their request has the community's best interest at heart. Obviously, developers are in the business of making money, which does not always translate to doing what is best for the citizens directly impacted by such developments. This parcel of land was purchased with the buyer fully aware of the existing zoning of the parcel. Nevertheless, the buyer decided to pursue a special permit to allow them to build a retail plaza and not develop the parcel under their existing zoning. Why? One would have to assume because it would be more profitable for them to build a retail plaza. That is their choice, but at whose expense? The North Beverly residents, without a doubt. The Parking and Traffic Commission voted unanimously to recommend that the board approve the requested special permit. Recent reported comments by Chairman Rich Benevento indicated, however, that they could not positively forecast whether or not the reconfigured Connector Road would be adequate to handle existing traffic, let alone additional anticipated traffic from the proposed retail development, and also that there were no other alternatives to address traffic issues if the plaza is built and the improvements cannot handle the additional traffic. In addition, he stated that all "what ifs" cannot be anticipated in every proposed project. In my opinion, the most logical approach to removing some of the most controversial "what ifs" referred to by Chairman Benevento would be to wait for the pending reconfigured connector to be completed and proven through actual use and not supposition to be more than adequate for existing peak traffic conditions, and then determine if it can handle all the extra cars, trips, whatever you want to call them, that have been projected in conjunction with a retail plaza. It's not that we are against all changes. This area of North Beverly has been subject to many changes. Unfortunately, existing roadways were not able to be updated or deemed not necessary to be updated to meet the needs of those changes. Instead of trying to fit the square peg into the round hole to appease the applicant, why can't the planning board, traffic commission counselors, mayor, others who are elected or appointed to represent the citizens of Beverly put logic before finance and at least wait until we are certain the initial connector improvements will prove to be more than sufficient to handle the already existing traffic problems in the proposed development area? As a lifelong resident of Beverly, in the past 35 years on Walnut Avenue, I can attest that this area has taken on many changes that have impacted the lifestyles of residents of Brimble, Budley, Laurel, Putnam, and Walnut, Upper Dodge, and many other residential streets in this area. Please give us the courtesy of delaying decision, or better yet, of denying the request.
Thank you. Michael Wogan, followed by Pam DeAngelis.
Michael Wogan, 15 Walnut Avenue. During all these discussions, it's been mentioned that there's two schools close to this project. Actually, there's seven schools. There's five right on Sawyer and Tozer Road. You've got the Beverly High School, which is five tenths of a mile away from the proposed project. You have the Futures School, which has artistic children in it, around the corner on Tozer Road, the first building on the left. You have three schools at the North Shore Consortium, because they bought the building across from where their building is. They have an elementary grades. Then their high school's moving to the new building, and their alternative high school is moving in there. So you're talking quite a few more. So you're talking quite a few more special needs buses, school buses, teachers, parents, all coming on Sawyer Road. And it's going to be very close to the proposed entrance to the shopping center. Also, Santon Engineering has bought the lot on the corner of Tozer and Sawyer Road, and they've been out there surveying, and they plan on doing construction, breaking ground, in March. That's weather permitting. I don't know with all the snow. But, so there's going to be, I didn't hear any of this extra traffic that's being generated by these five schools and the Santon Engineering, and any of the traffic studies done by Mueller Engineering, you know? They seem to not know about it or just left it out. Also, Ms. Brown said at the last meeting that when the music theater is letting out and the police have got the traffic stopped, that the cars coming up from the railroad tracks going toward the cove, it's not going to be that much of a inconvenience. Well, I'd like to inform her that I've been going up and down that road over 55 years. So I'd say I'm kind of an expert on sitting in traffic, and you sit there quite a long time. So with the added traffic to the shopping center, and when the music theater lets out, there's going to be gigantic traffic jams there. So I just hope the Board takes this into consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you.[724.25][724.25][applause] Pam DeAngelis, followed by Dan DeAngelis.
Chairman Thompson, Vice Chair Hutchinson, and members of the Planning Board. I would like to express my concern regarding the CEA Group's request for a special permit, which would allow retail use and restaurants on the parcel located at 140 Brimble Ave. Regarding special permit criteria number one, as a 34-year resident of Brimble Ave, I feel that the specific site is not an appropriate location for the proposed use and that the character of adjoining uses will be adversely affected. For these reasons, I believe that the proposal by CEA Group for a retail development at that location does not meet the special criteria necessary in order to be granted a special permit for the proposed use. As the city grows and changes, one of its goals should be to focus the development of commercial and industrial projects in appropriate locations in order to discourage their expansion into nearby residential neighborhoods, thereby reducing their impact on those residential areas. Residents living near the proposed shopping center would actually be bearing the brunt of the impact of this project's development. The city's peer review has confirmed that over 50% of the expected vehicle passes would be within the residential areas. Those of us who chose to purchase homes here could not have reasonably expected that a property that was zoned IR and was owned by the archdiocese for decades would suddenly be transformed into a commercial development of this magnitude. Also, rather than facilitating the development of this retail plaza with its resulting traffic, the city could continue to focus its efforts on securing funding for Phase II road improvements so that Dunham Road residents may be relieved of the traffic associated with the development of the Second Coming Center, currently under construction there. Here, we find an example of employment that offers higher wages and as currently zoned will not impact those smaller, unique, and locally-owned shops and restaurants, many in North Beverly, whose viability would be directly impacted by the nationally-known business expected to be part of this proposed plaza. Northridge Homes abut the property in question. As such, these homeowners are the most directly impacted by the proposed commercial development. In addition to environmental concerns, they will have to withstand the noise associated with the grocery store and the daily routine of delivery vehicles driving to and from the various retail businesses. No amount of mitigation will mask the impact this will have on their quality of life. As recently stated, the proponent is now hoping to gain Mass DOT's approval for access and egress from the plaza onto Sawyer Road in an area which currently has a Mass DOT No Access designation. If the state were to grant its approval, Northridge residents would find it increasingly difficult to access their driveways due to the traffic entering the shopping center as it arrives from homebound, end-of-day traffic from the Elliott Street Coming Center and other locations. Based on the traffic studies presented, at least 15% of all traffic entering and 30% exiting from the plaza would rely on this access point. This proposed driveway, which would be shared with delivery trucks accessing the side-loading area of the proposed grocery store, is within 15 feet of the back of the K Building at Northridge, whose homes will now abut a busy commercial road. Finally, for those of us who live here, the issue at hand is not solely one of slowing traffic that is speeding by, though that would be welcomed, nor simply a matter of not wanting to be faced with traffic jams that need amelioration, but rather, to the car-by-car-by-car passing of vehicles, whether speeding by or stalled in traffic. We're speaking of the desire to prevent our roadways and neighborhoods from becoming a thoroughfare. It's a matter of quality of life. This concept is not complex, but it does deal with a basic human requirement: shelter in all that the word encompasses. Please put yourselves in our shoes to understand our predicament. The argument that this particular commercial development is necessary for the good of Beverly holds no consolation for residents of North Beverly, Northridge Homes, and Montserrat, who are being asked to sacrifice on a daily basis the quality of life that we currently have for the benefit of shoppers from surrounding towns and areas who desire an organic lifestyle. And just in closing, two things. I know that a promotional packet, and again, as Catherine Mills Myers pointed out, this is a part, as we understand from what you're determining. However, there are arguments being made in this direction, so I would like to address them. There was a promotional packet about Whole Foods that was sent out that you may have seen, and states in very compelling ways the good that they feel that they do in their communities. And when I was reading this, I reminded myself to consider the source of this packet. This is a business, a very altruistic business in many ways, but it's a business, and I'm speaking of Whole Foods. And they do a very good job, a very clever job, at branding themselves, and as a result, they've had a tremendous draw in, from neighborhoods. However, they are a business, and it is the nature of business to make a profit. And in order to make a profit, one is going to put oneself in an area where there will be a large draw from the surrounding towns and from the town itself. And by situating oneself in this particular parcel of land, they are anticipating large numbers of cars who will be traveling in order to reach their shop. Just the very fact that this particular well-known business wants to be there ensures that they know that they are going to draw like a sponge shoppers from all of the surrounding towns to come to this particular location. And as we have already discussed, a large percentage of these cars are going to come right down through the neighborhoods. I believe it was the 50/52% of the cars are going to be traveling through the neighborhoods. For those who really, truly want to shop at a particular grocery store, we can remember that there is another market, this specific market approximately 10 miles away, and if it is important to choose this store, there is already one existing. It may be less convenient to drive a few extra minutes away in order to shop, but it is a choice that can be made. Those of us who live in these neighborhoods near this proposed plaza would have a much harder time choosing a different place to live. Regarding property values, experience says that you would not choose to purchase a home in an area in a very highly-trafficked neighborhood. And regarding this, a year and a half ago, at the very first meeting that we had regarding this project at City Hall, as a matter of fact, I believe it was in September of 2013, I had a chance to speak with a former mayor and spoke to him just as we have been to you about our concerns, our traffic, our concerns about traffic, the impact on the neighborhood, and so on and so forth. And he, out of anyone, would understand the impact, the pros, the cons of this particular plaza on Beverly and on the nearby residents. And he said, and he was being genuine when he said this, I feel, he said, "I feel for you. I really do. Maybe you should move." And I explained that I did not want to move. This was my home. My children learn to walk in this house. My grandmother's flowers are in my garden. I don't want to move anywhere else. Shortly afterwards, I had another opportunity to speak with a mayoral candidate at that time, and I asked that he look me in the eyes and tell me how this particular plaza was in truth, really going to help me out. Me being me in particular, but our general neighborhood as well. And he responded, "Where you live, it's not going to help you." Please consider how this location will affect our daily lives and understand that this specific site is not an appropriate location for the proposed use and that the character of adjoining uses will be adversely affected. In consideration of the above, I ask you, as members of the Planning Board, to deny the applicant's request for a special permit while affording him the opportunity to develop as of right on this parcel. Thank you for the time and the thoughtful consideration that you have given to this process.
Dan DeAngelis, followed by Carol Chalker. Carol, I can't read the last name. It's 191 Brimble Avenue. You know who you are.
Hi, Dan DeAngelis, too. I'm Brimble Ave. I know you've all probably seen my face more than you want to, so I'll be brief. First, I want to echo my wife's concerns and everything that she's brought up specifically with respect to the circumstances that we will face should this project be approved and all the residents of Brimble Ave. In particular, I want to thank everyone that's been involved for the 18 or so months since this project was first proposed. It's been a long and lengthy road for us to get to this point. So I thank everybody who's taken the time out to leaflet, make phone calls, get involved in any way that you could throughout this past year and a half. In particular, the Planning Board, I appreciate the time and effort that you folks have put into this. I know you've got reams of paper and lots of studies and things to look at, and we want you to know that we trust that you're going to do the right thing, both in terms of the guidelines that you need to follow, and more importantly, your realization that we are the citizens of Beverly. We're the folks that, in particular, are going to be the ones the most impacted by this. And you certainly have, have to weigh the benefits of that. But, you know, as everyone has reminded you, this, this is going to have a significant impact on everyone's quality of life. So we ask that you take that into consideration. One of the things that's concerned us throughout the entire process is the "what if" of this whole thing. Don Martin raised this question, as was reported in the paper at the last Parking and Traffic Committee. It's the "what if"? What if the studies aren't right? What if all the numbers that we've seen bandied about the percentage of traffic in our neighborhoods, the number of cars coming from one direction or another? What if that's off wildly? What if that's off 15%, 20%? I know we've been told that these numbers are conservative estimates. We've heard from lots and lots of traffic experts. As several folks have pointed out previous to my speaking, there are plenty of us who are traffic experts. We've all lived on the street. We know what it's like to get out of our driveway. We know what it's like to travel from one end of Brimble Ave to the other. So that "what if" scenario is what concerns us the most. And the reason for that is, we haven't seen any numbers, in spite of all the traffic numbers that you folks have seen, we haven't seen any traffic numbers from a Whole Foods. We've got one 10 miles away. We could have generated some numbers from them. I'm sure we could have seen what their proposed numbers were relative to what the numbers are afterwards, to see what it's been like after a year or so in existence, so we could get a general sense of what we could expect here. And the reason that "what if" matters is that even if those access points are granted by DOT, and that still remains up in the air, even if they are granted and that traffic turns out to be greater than it is, Brimble Ave will have already been built in the way that it can be built, and there's nothing more that can be done with it. Even the city's peer reviewers pointed out that should it be determined that that left-hand turn lane isn't sufficient to handle all the queuing traffic coming westbound on Brimble Ave, then the solution is for that westbound traffic to no longer be in a solely left-hand turning lane, but to back up into what is referred to as a suicide lane. And that's that left-hand, right-hand, shared lane that you see on 114 Endicott Street, that sort of thing. That's the same sort of thing that could happen on Brimble Ave, should the traffic exceed those expectations, because there really isn't anything in place that can be done. The city's peer reviewers pointed out that we can't put a stoplight there. There isn't enough room to allow, that wouldn't prevent any more problems because of the proximity of the rotary in front of the Vittori Rocky Post. And because of the configuration of the road, short of taking land that belongs to Mr. Santon across the street, there wouldn't be any room to put a rotary there. So that "what if" is a big thing for us, because there's no Plan B in place. There's no plan for the, what we believe will be the inevitable results of this traffic. That, in addition to the fact that the music theater traffic simply isn't a special event. And a special event is something that just happens every once in a while. There are scheduled events that occur, and everybody that lives on Brimble Ave knows what these special events are. They happen in the afternoon matinees, they happen in evenings, and if Mr. Haney is successful in growing his business, there are going to be more of these special events. At some point in the time, they become a reality, and for those of us who live here, they are a reality. So at any rate, my point is simply that I would encourage you to look closely at the facts, the concerns that we have as residents, and what has been clearly outlined are concerns relative to the six points that you need to take into consideration. And I know it's parsing of words, but undue traffic is undue traffic, and a sense of undue traffic is what you feel like when you wait and wait and wait in your driveway to get out every day. And any traffic above and beyond that is going to be dramatic and going to make our lives even hotter. We're not saying that the developer cannot consider something else in this parcel, and as of right, development is something that would be certainly a benefit both to the community in terms of tax revenue, if that's what's needed, but more importantly, it wouldn't have as significant an impact on the neighbors as it would have. So I ask you to deny the proponents' request for a special permit, and I appreciate the time and effort you've put in. Thank you.
Thank you.[1683.21][1683.21][applause] Carol is next, followed by Bill Soares.
I'm Carol Chalker. Bad handwriting, sorry. I have lived at 191 Brimble Avenue for 28 years and have been a resident of Beverly for 32 years. I've worked for the city of Beverly and the schools for over 20 years. My daughters were educated at North Beverly Elementary School, Memorial Middle School, and Beverly High School. My grandsons now, excuse me, I'm sorry, now attend the Beverly schools. They participate in the YMCA programs, the recreational department programs, and the youth sports programs. Somehow, over the years, North Beverly has just become my home. I appreciate, ladies and gentlemen of the Planning Board, the time that you have taken in listening to all of us. I also appreciate the volunteer service that this represents, because I know, I believe, most of you have been doing this for a lot of years, and there's no pay for this. And so, it's appreciated, even though, you know, we're pretty demanding, still appreciate what you do. Try to get through this, sorry. I'm going to start my brief remarks by referencing something that most people are familiar with, and that is the Serenity Prayer. Grant me the serenity to accept things I cannot change, the courage to change the things I can, and the wisdom to know the difference. And if wisdom comes with age, I qualify as having some. A year and a half ago, I became involved in the process that brings us all here tonight. I decided that I could possibly change the outcome of what was commonly referred to at that time as the "done deal." that time as the done deal. Alongside an amazing group of neighbors, many of whom have spoken tonight, a lot of whom have been just in the audience, and also citizens from all over the city who are concerned about responsible development, I came to believe that this beautiful residential street where I live did not have to become something that would destroy the safety and culture of our neighborhood and our city as well. I believed, and still do believe, that my property value can be maintained, the safety of my grandchildren can be better assured, and the quality of our lives does not have to become significantly depressed. Your vote is key to this outcome, in my opinion. Many citizens supported the efforts to stop the rezoning of the parcel of land to be swapped in that done deal. At that time, Mr. Cohen, Mr. Cohen, stated that if the land were not swapped, the Whole Foods would not be coming to Beverly. While the efforts were not quite enough, the state stepped in and undid the done deal with its refusal to have a new road on the former landfill. We were told at a point early on that the development of the CEA land was key to being given the Mass Works grant. Yet we studied the grant and the plaza proposal and came to believe that the road improvements could happen without a retail plaza on this land. We discovered one was not dependent upon the other, and that strengthened the resolve to be heard in our efforts to promote responsible development on our street. Not a done deal. More and more people came to realize that this was not a done deal. We are here today, as we have been for the past three meetings, where plans have been presented and discussed, and now our statements are all being heard. We have presented evidence to support a decision not to grant a special permit to allow a retail plaza to be built on Brimble Avenue. We do not believe it is a done deal. I will not go over any of those reasons, because everyone has done a fine job of doing it, and I never can keep track of it all, but you've heard it all. Thank you to the city councilors who have come forward and publicly supported our efforts to see retail establishment delayed on Brimble Avenue until we have had a chance to live with the road changes that are about to come with the Mass Works road improvements. Thank you, Matt St. Hilaire, Paul Guanci, and Don Martin, for recognizing the need to balance the economic needs of the city with the quality of life for so many of us. We are not afraid of change, as Mr. Cohen, you've suggested we are, although I am terrified of roundabouts. I'll have to learn to deal with it, though. And we accept the development of his land within the parameters of the existing zoning ordinance. From 191 Brimble Avenue to you nine planning board members, I request you to deny CEA's petition for a special permit to build a retail mall at 140 Brimble Avenue. Please allow CEA Group to build on their land by right. Please do not give them the key to my kingdom. I leave you with a small gift. It's a visual I prepared for the last meeting. And this is just something I took at the end of my driveway in October, end of October. There's no snow. I can't believe this. There were no accidents in the area. There was no music theater. This was just 5:30 at night traffic at the end of my driveway. Typical. It's pretty, but I can't get out of my driveway, and this is just what we face, and it is part of our life. Any more development is only going to add to what we already have. Thank you.
Bill Soares, followed by Meg Anderson.
I'll try and keep the thank-yous down, but I echo what others have said, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. Thank you very much for reading my stuff, for listening to my rambling. I will try and stay on point and focused today. But a couple of things that have been said that I do want to lead with. Carol was the person just before me. Is that true? And Louis, Louis and I went to high school together, and his passion, I echo. We've lived in the same neighborhood for most of our lives, he more than me, within 100 yards of where we live today. And we've seen too much with traffic and kids. We know kids that have been hit in families, and so I just, that passion is real. So adding to that is where that comes from, where that, where both of us come from on that. I didn't get up to speak about that, but the same with what Carol has said. Whenever that street backs up, as Louis says, they just come piling down Walnut and Putnam, and that's where the kids are right in their sights. As you might know, the old Nike site is there, so a lot of military housing, a lot of transition, all young people, all young kids, all in that neighborhood, high turnover, but it stays the same, so. Today, what I'd like to do is talk a little bit about facts. I have a couple of opinions in there. I'll try and state, both for emphasis and to tell you when a point, I'm trying to state a fact, and then relate those to the criteria, and then I'll finish up with some references on some internet subjects and items that I've looked at. As Carol stated fact, about a year or two ago, CEA announced to the media in ad hearings that there would be no Whole Foods without the land swap. It didn't happen, and Whole Foods is still here, on a smaller lot, so how is that possible? I believe I can show you some of the shortcuts taken at the city and at the property's expense. Fact, mobility and sight impaired pedestrians have trouble navigating and crossing four lanes and crosswalks near roundabouts. This is from a traffic study in roundabouts in the state of Maryland. I know we got some blinking flashing lights, but that doesn't help someone who can't see or feel. You know, a single lane is fine, but you're crossing two at a time, and then you're on a protection and you cross two more. It's an issue. Fact, extra non-controlled curb cuts on the connector road and Sawyer Road, plus the left turn on Brimble, will add to the already busy traffic in these streets. Fact, left-turn-only signals do not and will not prevent unauthorized turns. Everybody knows how you spin around Brimble Ave, how you get by the Lowe's, you know, over in Peabody, right in front of McDonald's. You just take a quick left turn. So they put up bollards there, they put up more concrete, and people still do it. Everywhere you go, you try and manage people not to take a shortcut. Really, I can't believe that even in the city's design, that that Rocky Post entrance is a quick left turn right next to the connector. So, I mean, I think we're going to have troubles there, and it's just not good design. Fact, the traffic plan onsite in the smallest allowable parking spaces of 9 by 18, and I don't know where the 8 by 18 came from for compact cars, are smaller than any grocery store I've seen within 10 miles. Even at Dodge Crossing, I believe it's called Dodge Crossing, where Average Joe's is and all those shops in there, I think those are 9 by 20. And every time I park in there, I feel like I'm going to ding somebody's car, or my car's going to be dinged. And we'll have a whole block of 350 of those. It feels very tight to park. Most, if not all, grocery stores, and you can go out and measure them, take your tape measure, it's real easy, pace them, do however you like, they'll have 10 by 20, and that's designed across standard Commonwealth cities and towns. I know in our ZBA, we allow the 9 by 18, but I think it's a minimum. As a special permit, I would recommend and suggest that we increase that for all of the reasons you've heard earlier. We're boxed in here. There's no place to add extra parking. There's no place to expand. You get what you get. I believe this board has a responsibility to ensure that the right thing is done in parking. Between the last meeting and this meeting, I had to take out the magnifying glass, but I looked at the site plan, and I believe there's an error in the number of allowable parking spaces by zoning. I believe it's 325 by my calculations. It appears on the legend on the bottom right of that plan, the 15,000-odd square foot retail space was put into the under 10,000, not the over 10,000. So given that, yes, they have small spaces, yes, they provide 350, but if they expanded that, I think they'd be, they'd have trouble meeting that zoning with allowable spaces that are comfortable for people coming in into an isolated site. Fact, there appears to be no reasonable place in the plans to allow snow piles to occur. Now, I'm not talking about what's out there today. I understand that that's almost impossible to design for, but the islands seem to be really small in this area with all the cars packed in. So, I mean, I think we're just going to degrade the parking there as soon as the snow hits in the wintertime. Fact, the diagonal parking spaces on the side of building number one require people to back up into one of the main exit lanes. How is that not an accident waiting to happen? I just can't believe that those are anything but stuffed in there. Fact, the onsite design of the traffic flow puts every car driving past virtually all pedestrians in front of Whole Foods and the other buildings. The design of this strip mall is really troublesome. So think of it, when, the Danvers one comes to mind, off of 62, as you're driving past that main road, you drive past all of those stores, every single pedestrian has the right of way, and you have to negotiate that. If you have a lot of one-ways and trucks and cars going by, I think there's a better possibility for design there. Interestingly, I, in some research, uncovered that about 90% or more of the Better for Beverly funding came from Mr. Cohen and the CEA Group. So it just occurred to me that we got defeated in a vote, as you might remember, a year and a half ago, and how is that better for anyone other than the CEA Group and Mr. Cohen? Fact, with respect to Mr. Cohen and Mr. Alexander's assertion that the what, that the Whole Foods joins with the communities where they are billed, maybe they can explain why the Whole Foods turned down a community agreement in Jamaica Plain about a year or two ago, to ensure the quality of life did not deteriorate in that community when that Whole Foods went there. Whole Foods is a Texas-based chain store, steeped in profit and loss, much like any other big box store, not a community-based grocer like our own local businesses and grocers, as you've heard from folks up here. They have an excellent marketing plan. They have excellent followership. They have people that will thrive, and I'll give you a couple of quotes later on that I found humorous, but they've got a great business chain. It's just not for this site. Fact, as I've told you, with a civil engineering background, from my perspective, the 24-inch drain line trunk running through this site would have required a thorough investigation and potentially repairs and replacements due to the foundations proposed for the development. So their assertion that that replacement of the trunk was a gift to the city, I think, is purely self-serving, in my opinion. Fact, the 200,000 offered for road and traffic improvement is not going to make appreciable difference in the two major intersections in question at either end of Brimble Avenue. I think that's just a version of, deal with your own traffic, and we just want this site, rather than something like if, what Dan had suggested, if that traffic just becomes too much, for whatever reason, maybe an escrow fund, or maybe putting some kind of a condition to say, "All right, you own two full sets of lights on Sawyer and Brimble Ave to release traffic in there," despite what has been proposed and forwarded by the developer and experts here. If that's a condition, and it never happens, then they never have to pay. Fact, CPI, one of the direct abutters to this site, has serious questions relative to the drainage design and assumptions on this site. The three concerns that I was able to glean from that is, one, an underestimation of the runoff from the North Ridge Apartments; two, potential undercapacity of the critical parts of the drainage system; and three, ineffectiveness of the existing trunk line to handle existing and new runoff due to this development and potentially what's been either sitting there or clogged. I'm not going to quote their study. They did an engineering study. They hired, I think it was Huntington Engineering. And additionally, they're questioning parts of the existing system and any blockages. All of this needs to be addressed by CEA and their site. I'm just not sure that it has. I know we've spent so much time on traffic. I only looked at that, saw it recently. I don't know who is responsible to see that through. Fact, CEA is well over their impervious lot coverage density of 60% allowed by zoning rights, and proposes to pave some of the parking lot with a semi-impervious substance to allow coverage of over 72%. To me, that's a fancy word for porous asphalt. Has the planning board reviewed the calculations for the non-pervious lot coverage? I can't see 25% there. I'm lucky if I can see 15%. I don't have CAD, you know, program at home, and I don't have the program to be able to do that work, but I really, with enough experience, fail to see that. My concern here isn't that requirement for aesthetic reasons, and isn't the guideline a minimum. So why would we look to loosen that so they can put more parking in? It looks like it's just trying to put too much on this site, too much pavement, too many buildings, too much shoehorned in. Again, the beautification, the coverage is meant for grass, trees, lawns, gardens, landscape, not buildings, paving, sidewalk, concrete patios, and outdoor dining, I guess. So this next one is professional opinion. I am not, I'm not a traffic expert, but I've studied a little bit. It's dated, admittedly, but I believe the traffic in the CEA studies are underestimated, because that's how the process works. They're not deterministic calculations. In other words, you can't put the same numbers in and get the same numbers, the same exact numbers out. There are too many variables. They're called either stochastic or statistical models, which allows for those variabilities in nature. And they're based on assumptions and models that introduce errors to account for those variabilities. Some parts of them are definitely deterministic. Some parts can be validated and checked, but due to the many things and the controls and the assumptions and what models they're using, and whether those models are updated or they're the latest version or 2013 version, or... And they're going to favor what the drive is from the person funding the request. So the measurements, the errors, and other variances, and the, if you want to call them "safety factors," are bent that way. If I had the resources or a close friend who was a traffic engineer, I can certainly prove that to you, and that's why it's only an opinion, not a fact, especially on these local streets. And as I pointed out to you earlier, because of the location of all of the Whole Foods in the other areas, there isn't anything up to the northwest, all the way up. Andover's the closest one. So folks are going to come in from 1A, 97, 35, 22, 127, 62, and that's why I'm saying that they're coming in on the local streets, not so much the highway. And they're driving them squarely into those busiest streets in our city, 1A, Brimble Ave, and back through Cove and Centerville. So again, professional opinion, these are more art form than engineering. The models are always under scrutiny and refinement, much like weather forecasts or real estate appraisals. I can liken it to baseball contract negotiations. You bring yours, I bring mine, whoever gets closest to the quote-unquote "the middle," then, you know, either you win or not. So I also submit that the city's peer review is an exercise in stating, did they do their math correctly? Did they make the assumptions on the things that we can check and validate versus did they look at the right things? We have lived here for most of our lives. You've heard it from several folks, and we believe that in these areas, they're not looking at the right things. And they're not looking at it from a perspective of the picture that Carol handed out in the traffic that we see day to day and live with. Fact, almost done, folks. Thank you. I really appreciate you giving me the time here. In my research on the internet, there's not been a Whole Foods installation without traffic concerns and neighborhood impacts, unless, of course, they're occupying an existing strictly commercial, industrial, or other grocery location by another large grocery chain. This location is anything but that, especially not with the original footprint that was proposed for the Whole Foods to be in there. So in summary, the five to six, of the six factors I'd like to speak to, I'll brush through these, because others have spoken to them already. Is the site specific and appropriate to the character? I don't think it's appropriate location because of the lot coverage, upsite traffic flows, congestion presented. And it's not in character of the adjoining uses. Number two, that no factual evidence is found that property values in the district will be adversely affected. I've told you I'm a registered licensed real estate broker. Most of my work has been in commercial. I don't practice residential right now, but I've had a lot of training, a lot of experience. And you've heard it, and it's true. The additional traffic will impact those values for the people in the communities directly affected. for the people in the communities directly affected. Will someone in Centerville or downtown Beverly realize an uptick because there's a Whole Foods within five miles? For sure. That will happen, and that can happen. And you can get your appraiser, and I can get my appraiser, and we can get three others and brokers, and we can discuss this around and around and around. But the traffic impact is real. Three, no undue traffic and no nuisance or unreasonable hazard will result. Many people have spoken to that. If you do approve this, please put a condition about full traffic light somewhere in there to say that if it does bust through, if something does happen, that we've got the developer to say, "Hey, you know, it's reasonable to presume that your extra traffic is causing us problems, so we have to do something." That's all I'm asking. Number four, adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation and maintenance of the proposed use. The dumpsters are squeezed in, the parking squeezed in. It just feels way too tight. I'm really concerned with the residences, but I'm not a resident and a butter, so I know I can't speak to that. The landscaping, it just feels just way too tight. Number five, there are no valid objections from abutting property owners. I think you've heard, I'm not an abutting property owner, so CPI and the Northridge folks will have to speak to that. And I think they have. The last pieces on some of my internet research is basically that several of the Whole Foods-generated traffic times happen at noon time, when least expected. They offer local delivery options for local neighborhoods. I'm not sure that that's been looked into at all. In 2007, a Newton special permit was not granted because of increased traffic projections. 2013, Philadelphia Road and Square, best known as the Whole Foods that will eat the Best Western. I mean, these guys are real. They're big. And they consume, and they go after all the business, so... Not unlike Shreveport, Louisiana, Engineering Department, we ask that if you're going to impact traffic, then they take a financial burden in admitting any of it. A few things on the U.S. Grocer Trends Report in 2012. Organics are up, no secret. After falling steadily through the recession, organic sales rebounded in '09 and it's outpaced overall sales ever since by about ten percent on their graph each year thereafter. Over forty percent of consumers feel that health and wellness products are worth spending a little more on, are worth going after. You see double-digit growth bouncing through some of this. Again, from U.S. Grocer Trends 2012, while shoppers may spend fewer dollars at the grocery store, they're more interested in the value and the health and the wellness sustainability. For example, seventy-eight percent are more interested in nutrition.
Mr. Sors, this isn't a debate about Whole Foods. Can you move on to your next point, please?
I'm sorry?
We're not here to debate whether Whole Foods is a good business or a bad business. Talk about the project, please.
And what I'm trying to talk about is the growth, the traffic, the resulting effect of this impact. So every, and I'll wrap up with this, sir. So thank you. I apologize for running late. Every single grocery store within a ten-mile radius of here has grown or relocated to a larger store over the past ten to twenty years. And the assumption is, my assumption is, that this one will as well. Where does that growth occur if we shoehorn it into this site? Across Brimble, across Sawyer, back to the state land, over the highway? We're seemingly boxed in, trying to fit this into a small site, taking lots of exceptions and lots of special conditions about parking, coverage, and so on. And it looks like it's just going to blow up. The community will live with this if the special permit is approved. And it's obvious that, from my perspective, it doesn't belong here. So thank you for listening. Thank you for the time. I appreciate anything you have. And I would ask you to look at that number for the allowable number of cars because I think it's short by about twenty-five, thirty, based on that discrepancy.
We'll look at that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Meg Anderson, followed by Josh Morris.
Hello. I'm Meg Anderson, Seventy-Sixth Baker Avenue. And just to let some of you know who I am, I am a former Beverly Cultural Council volunteer and a current volunteer of Beverly Bootstraps. That is just to let you know that I have given my time to the city and I like the community here. I've just got one bit that came to my mind as I walked here. And I'm looking to the future, Phase Two, and the Cummings Development on Dunham Road. And it seems to me that the traffic numbers of 6,000 additional cars will make it more, will make the Dunham property project less attractive to that owner and also to the employees who will eventually be commuting to the Dunham Road property. At 6,000 additional, just for the CEA project, that is one car every fifteen seconds, which to me is kind of like watching the Macy's Day Parade on television, minus the balloons. It just goes on and on and on. And it's not very interesting. And neither are the commentators. So it just seems to me that the Cummings property will suffer and actually will bring more revenue to the city than the CEA project does. And I'm also aware that the former mayor said that income from, well, when all this started, "Do we, don't we want this? Can we, can't we have it?" And the Better for Beverly were saying that, "Oh, but we're going to need this money for our infrastructure, for our new schools." In the application for the $5 million fund, the mayor indicated to the state that money for the development of the land of CEA, income from that, will be dedicated to eliminating the debt incurred from Phase One. So money from CEA will not go to our schools or to our infrastructure because that is not the basis on which the $5 million grant was approved. So we can't go by that argument for agreeing to giving CEA what they would like to have in their special permits. And there's more that we could go on and on, but I think others have valid points to say. So I ask that really think more about this. And I think it's clear for most of us who live nearby. We like Whole Foods, but I wouldn't shop there every day. I'd go there on occasion if I could get in and out.
Thank you. Josh Morris, followed by Jennifer Morris.
Good evening. Josh Morris, 38 Budley Ave. The project in front of us is currently inconsistent with the Beverly Master Plan. The proposed project does not meet the city's planning objectives as stated in the economic development goals. The goal, to focus the development and redevelopment of commercial and industrial projects in appropriate locations, discourage commercial or industrial expansion into residential neighborhoods, as well as reduce the impact of commercial and industrial activities on nearby residential areas. Another goal stated in the master plan, develop more city control of building and site design and sign regulations, discourage development of strip malls. In terms of what the first criteria, that the specific site is an appropriate location for the proposed use and the character of adjoining uses will not be adversely affected. Currently today, in the hundred-year-plus history of Brimble Avenue, there has never been such an intense retail establishment or store selling the types of goods proposed in the plaza. This project will introduce a new use that has never existed in the immediate and surrounding area. This will dramatically change the feel and fabric of the area and surrounding neighborhoods. This use at this location would be unique. And further, the size and scope does not fit the site or within the residential neighborhoods nearby along Brimble Avenue and will significantly alter Montserrat and North Beverly neighborhoods, which are very close by. One does not have to look too far on Route 1A from Henry's to Dawson's to experience and see how retail and shopping plazas impact a neighborhood. For the other special permit criteria, that there are no valid objections from abutting property owners and demonstrable fact. Clearly, several residents of Northridge have had many issues with the project, especially the entrance and exits of Sawyer Road. I'm not sure if you, if everyone on the planning board saw that picture of the building, the K Building, that was submitted by Northridge residents. But I think that's a significant picture. I myself didn't even realize the closeness and proximity. They've also had some of the other major issues brought up by Northridge, including buffers and increasing the buffers in between the two properties, I think, is very important. Not only a fence has been proposed, but also, I think, significant landscaping would also be very important for the Northridge residents. Also, in terms of abutting property owners, CPI has recently submitted their letter about the, it seems to be, significant drainage issues and how they feel the storm runoff might impact their nearby property across the way.
I might add, since several people have mentioned this, there has been a subsequent letter from Hancock conceding, I guess, or that all the points they raised had been satisfied.
Okay, very good. And then the criteria that no undue traffic and no nuisance of an unreasonable hazard will result. Currently, the Laurel and Dodge and the Brimble and Colon intersections currently are at capacity and movements are operating at level of Service F, especially in the PM peak. The mitigation identified for the overall corridor along Brimble Ave does not resolve all traffic issues within the study area. And many traffic movements will remain at level of Service F and worsen, especially both ends of Brimble. The geometry of the roadway before the intersections at each end of the Brimble simply cannot accommodate the amount of trips generated from the plaza. The amount of mitigation is just not sufficient. Combined with the train stations, it's very difficult for any meaningful or practical improvements. None are readily available. And there are no early, there are no easy fixes on each end. In addition, in terms of the undue traffic, the proposed project has a serious lack of alternative and public transportation options. The bus, there's a bus that kind of, that is nearby, has low ridership. And on the hours, the hours during weekdays are very limited and only in the morning and evening with long headways. It only goes by every sixty minutes and doesn't even have weekend service when the shopping plaza will have the majority of customers and that equals cars. The closest bus stop is approximately one half-mile to the south of the site. Make it very unlikely to be used as a means to travel to the plaza. The commuter rail stations are also a considerable distance from the proposed plaza. And the trains, similar to the bus, have long headways on weekends when shopping plaza will be most utilized. It's usually 120 to 100 minutes every, on trains, back-to-back. It will be difficult for customers, especially shopping at the proposed grocery store, to carry numerous bags of food on public transportation. It is not practical to go to a grocery store, shopping by bus or train, especially when both are at least a half a mile away. Additionally, pragmatic, traditional, additionally pragmatic transportation demand management measures are severely weak. The applicant has stated that the employees would be encouraged to do direct deposit to reduce traffic. So I mean, I'm sure, I think that we could do some additional measures there. More realistic, that the population will actually utilize and will have to come up with more creative approaches to reducing the significant amount of cars traveling to the plaza, especially on the weekend. The applicant even admitted that the retail has very limited options in terms of TDM measures and that a major issue with having a shopping plaza with no other land uses and no public transportation in the immediate vicinity. In conclusion, due to the totality of concerns and issues that arise from the proposed project and have not yet been resolved, I strongly urge the planning board to deny the special permit. There are many reasons, several explained earlier, why the property at 140 Brimble has not been developed in over fifty years. This is an extremely difficult site. This project has significant transportation and community-related concerns that will have serious repercussions on the site itself, the immediate vicinity, and the thousands of residents who reside within one-half-mile radius. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Morris, followed by Rick Marciano.
Good evening. Thank you, Planning Board, for listening to our concerns. A little shorter. So in 2005, the planning board looked at the question of whether CEA's parcel should be rezoned from IR to CG to allow for retail development. At that time, the planning board unanimously voted no. In 2009, the city created the IR overlay, which was applied to the property and was basically a compromise that maintains the IR designation while allowing the possibility of retail development through a special permit. This essentially took the 2005 question about whether the site should allow retail in the general sense and postponed it to a later date when a specific project would be proposed for the site. That time is now. This current decision about the special permit is a decision as to whether the site should go from IR to retail. It is the concrete analog of the general question raised in 2005. In 2005, planning board members, some of whom are still on the board today, unanimously voted no to the idea of retail development at this site. Here are some of the things they said in that decision. Quote, "The rezoning would not provide a use that is necessary or desirable in the community." Quote, "By allowing retail uses along Brimble Avenue, the additional stores would draw investment away from other, from retail in other areas of the city." Quote, "It is not consistent with the master plan because the city wants to maintain the integrity of its IR districts." Quote, "Traffic is so problematic with the Norwood Pond industrial area. It is not a peak-traffic issue, but an issue caused by an overall far more intensive use." Quote, "The decision should not be influenced by who the owner is or by the anticipated tax revenue." Quote, "This use would have an extremely adverse impact on traffic and safety." Since 2005, traffic in the area has worsened, making a retail plaza in that location even more problematic than in the past. The current proposal is far more retail and traffic-intensive than anything that was on the table in the past, also making it more problematic. Also, in recent years, the city has renewed its commitment to revive downtown Beverly as the commercial center of the city, making a sprawl development that draws away from downtown more problematic. All these things suggest that it should be even more likely for the planning board to vote no now than it was in 2005. The new road improvements are simply not sufficient to justify a yes vote. The road improvements only address the level of service at the intersections directly adjacent to the plaza. Every other intersection within about a mile radius will be made worse, especially in the areas that have the largest effect on neighbors. So traffic is still a huge problem. Safety is still a problem. Drawing away from downtown is still a problem. The loss of IR property being inconsistent with the master plan is still a problem. And the fact that retail use is not necessary or desirable in that location is still a problem. Let's stick to the planning principles that drove the 2005 decision. Let's protect the neighborhoods and require a by-right project. I would like to address the special permit criteria specifically. And first, I would like to emphasize that the special permit criteria are purposely designed to set high standards for non-by-right use projects. And the way that they're worded are specifically to protect the local area surrounding the project. Tax revenue and alleged citywide benefits are not appropriate considerations for a special permit. Regarding the first criteria, the site is not an appropriate location and will be, and will adversely affect the character of the neighborhoods. The proposal is for a large regional grocery store, one of the largest traffic generators of any land use, and other retail in an inappropriate location between two vibrant neighborhoods on a street that is home to, as, to two elementary schools, the other schools that were previously mentioned, a daycare facility, a nursing home, an ambulance service, and within half a mile of Beverly Hospital and Beverly High School, and bookended by two train stations. This is not about Whole Foods. It doesn't matter if it is Whole Foods or Market Basket or Target or Walmart. What matters is that it is a high-traffic-generating project being squeezed into an inappropriate location that would... inappropriate location that would adversely affect the surrounding residential neighborhoods. The character of the area and quality of life of those living in the area would be seriously deteriorated, deteriorated by this project. Virtually anything else built on the site would have less of a negative impact while still bringing in revenue for the city. Speaking of tax revenue, the plaza would bring less than 0.3% or 1/400 of the city budget. Plus, that amount would be diminished by the cost of services that the city would need to provide to the plaza. So, in reality, we are talking about crushing the character of the surrounding neighborhoods for practically nothing. However, a more important point about tax revenue is that it is not part of the criteria on which the planning board is directed to make its decision. As neighbors, we do not expect that nothing will ever be built on that site. However, we do expect our city and planning board to ensure that impacts are minimized and that whatever is built will maintain the integrity of our neighborhoods. The planning board can do that by denying the special permit and promoting a by right development that would have a substantially lower impact. A by right plan would fit better with the site, would have less of an impact on the neighborhoods, would still bring tax revenues for the city, and would not offset the road improvements that we are currently investing in. Regarding the second criteria, property values will be adversely affected. There are a number of published scientific studies, which I'm happy to share if you would like, proving that traffic decreases residential property values, which I'm sure you know. Traffic, both traffic volumes and traffic noise have an undeniable negative impact on residential property values. The traffic studies readily acknowledge that this project would worsen traffic on both ends of Brimble Avenue, where homes densely line the street. As a result, this project would decrease property values of all of the homes along Brimble Avenue. Those homes would now be on a busier road with high levels of traffic, cars constantly idling in front, windows that cannot be opened due to the noise and air pollution, driveways that are impossible to pull out of, and increased safety concerns for children. This impact ripples onto the side streets as it would now take longer to get anywhere and there would be ramp, a rampant increase in the volume of cars that would use once small and quiet side streets as cut-throughs to avoid all of the traffic. Even if only the nearly 100 homes directly on Brimble and Budley Avenues lost just $5,000 from their property value, that would be a loss of nearly $500,000 across property owners. The alleged Whole Foods effect, the claim that Whole Foods increases property values, simply does not apply to this context. This is not an up and coming dense urban area that would benefit from the addition of a neighborhood grocery store that most customers would walk to. This is a suburban area where virtually every customer would drive and the surrounding neighborhoods would be negatively impacted by the increased traffic from the addition of a grocery store in that inappropriate location. Further, North Beverly already houses three of the city's four grocery stores. We do not need another. Regarding the third criteria about undue traffic nuisance and unreasonable hazard, you've heard plenty about this. Of course, the nature of the plaza, retail and especially, especially a regional grocery store, will cause undue traffic. It is inconsistent with the residential nature of the immediate area and vastly disproportionate to the plaza's size of about 66,000 square feet. We still do not know if Mass DOT will allow curb cuts on the Connector Road or Sawyer Road, and these decisions have serious implications for the project and traffic flow. I personally do not understand why we would even want a curb cut on the Connector Road because it would clearly jeopardize the operation of the $5 million road improvements. The volume of cars trying to turn right onto what is essentially a highway off-ramp, having to cross over one lane of traffic to get to the inner lane is sure to cause problems and backups, particularly at PM peak and on weekends. Why should we allow this plaza to compromise the road improvements? Further, traffic studies and peer reviews were conducted for the latest road improvements on Route 62 in Danvers, and the traffic nightmare that resulted was not predicted in the traffic models. The same goes for Route 1A and Elliott Street in Beverly. When the reality differs so greatly from the model outcomes, we must question and reassess the models, best practices, and assumptions and balance them with what we see in the real world. This is particularly important here, where the new road configuration of two roundabouts in a row is uncommon and driver error is sure to play a significant role. Even taking the traffic studied numbers as correct, the planning board still must make a judgment as to whether it amounts to undue traffic or not. In making this judgment, it would be irresponsible to look simply at the level of service at the roundabouts next to the plaza. Even if each car only has to wait a few seconds to go through the roundabout, the frequency with which the cars will come because of the sheer volume means that it will be incredibly difficult to turn onto Brimble Ave from anywhere else. Our driveways become level of service F, all side streets become level of service F, pulling out of the gas station of a Torrey Rocky Post becomes level of service F, the Brimble Ave Route 128 Southbound intersections have degraded levels of service, and although the intersections at each end of Brimble Ave are already level of service F, they become even worse to the point that they absolutely require mediation. By including the wider area in the assessment, as it should be, traffic is clearly undue. Also, it is unacceptable for the developer to expect us to wave our hands at the traffic impact on each end of Brimble Avenue because those intersections are already bad. On the contrary, it is because they are already bad that we should not be approving projects that are going to make them worse. It would be extremely myopic and irresponsible to just consider the marginal impact of this project in isolation of the context. If the city takes such a view, every project would be approved because their isolated impact is claimed to be moderate, and the result would be traffic gridlock. We need to consider the cumulative effect of all the traffic we are adding and acknowledge that the area is simply incapable of handling it. Yes, traffic is already bad, but as only one traffic is added from this plaza that total traffic crosses the threshold and requires mediation. Where is Beverly going to get the money to remediate the intersections on each end of Brimble? There's not going to be $5 million grants to fix every intersection, and a $200,000 traffic light is not going to come close to solving the problem. Ultimately, whether or not the road improvements can handle the traffic from the plaza is an entirely different question than whether or not the traffic is undue. The traffic impact just beyond the road improvements make it undue. Also, while the road improvements may be able to handle the traffic, at least during the very short seven-year timeframe of the traffic study, the important point is that this 166,000-square-foot project would bring with it excessive traffic, eating up much of the capacity of the new road, such that it will be unable to handle future by right development or support further growth. It is undue for one small project to consume so much of the capacity that the $5 million in road improvements is adding. The fourth criteria, are adequate and proper facilities being provided for the operation and maintenance of the proposed use? Although it seems that questions about drainage potentially have been answered, the last we heard, there were major unresolved issues, and an important question is what is going on with that 24-inch pipe and who is paying for that to be moved or not moved? And there are several other areas where the plan seems to be problematic, such as inadequate sound buffers, parking, traffic flow for trucks, pedestrian safety within the plaza, and one ways at each of the entrances that would be confusing to customers. Fifth, of course, there are valid objections from abutters. Residents at Northridge and CPI have raised concerns, in particular, the traffic, from Northridge, the traffic, the proximity of Sawyer Road, the Sawyer Road entrance, the proximity of the plaza buildings, the noise pollution, the lack of a sufficient buffer, the venting of methane gas and lighting are serious concerns. And most of these have not been fully fleshed out or addressed or discussed. As in a typical site plan review at a public hearing, those are the focus of hours of conversation. These have barely received a moment of discussion for this plan from, as, the way that these meetings have been structured has been focused on drainage and then traffic. It has left little opportunity for residents to address the small minor details that they may have concerns about for this, this specific site plan. Sixth, the, will adequate and appropriate city services be available for the proposed use? Providing city services to the plaza will have a cost. Services such as police, fire, ambulance, the cost of increased road maintenance due to the heavy volumes of traffic, specifically trucks. How much will this cost? Does the police department even have capacity to increase the traffic monitoring in the area and the accident response in the area because there's sure to be an increased accident rate in the area? Those are things that need to be considered, and we certainly do not have the adequate means to remedy the intersections on both ends of Brimble Ave if this project goes through. And Grover Street and exits 18 and 20 cannot handle extra traffic if drivers shift their travel patterns to avoid traffic of the plaza. To be honest, I have been disheartened by the lack of critical thinking that the city has displayed on the project in this area. It seems to be blinded by the relatively minuscule tax revenue that the plaza would bring. I trust the planning board will be more deliberate and instead put neighborhoods first as the special permit criteria require. As the current proposal does not meet the special permit criteria, I trust that the board will deny the special permit in favor of a by right project that would be a win-win for everyone involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Rick Marciano followed by Peter Walker.
Looked extra bad after that. That was great. Reference to a drainage example. I'd ask for a drainage example to go from CEA's property all the way down to the Bass River. Oh, I requested that the citizens could see where the drainage went through the 24-inch pipe that's collapsing, goes from there all the way down to Bass River to show that. Is that on the screen there? As you read that letter from CPI, they, they know more drainage will be heading to Bass River, so you understand that now. Why does CPI and Coming Center have to pay for their drainage? Is there, they have to pay for their drainage lines that are running through their property. Why is the city of Beverly paying for a private property's drainage? Is there? Okay. There's a drainage pipe that runs through the property, and the city of Beverly, from what I understand, they're going to be paying, or the taxpayers of Beverly are going to pay to fix this pipe.
That's not correct.
Okay, you're, so you have full responsibility for this pipe? Okay. CEA has full responsibility for this 24-inch drainage pipe?
They are replacing the pipe, and it's going to be done in coordination with the city engineer, who will have to approve the specifications and location, and it's not going to go under buildings.
Okay, and no longer it's a cost to the citizens?
Not that I understand.
Okay, great. They have that straightened out. Has document been provided to show that CEA has met all the state's or MEEP or drainage Have you received documentation?
Ms. Marciano, just list off your questions, and we'll give the applicant a chance to address them when they have a chance to speak. Just keep them going. We'll, we'll answer them at the end, if they choose to.
In reference to the freezer units and the HVAC units that will be on top of the buildings and around the buildings, can there be a level that it shall be no louder than 10 decibels from the lot line of Northridge? So, when that's measured, basically sent in the lot line, it will not be no higher, the HVAC units?
My understanding is we have a sound emission ordinance, and that will govern this project like all other projects.
Okay, and I'm requesting a 10 decibel is what I'm requesting. We already talked everything about traffic other than the cuts at Sawyer Road and at the, in the Connector Road, that's going to undermine basically redoing the Connector Road and redoing this area. So, I'm just, for the traffic to start pulling in there, I'm just letting you know that the same problems may be happening by having all the vehicles cutting into the right off the Connector Road at the same time all the other vehicles want to take a right to go on Brimble Ave to head on down. So, that's undermining that. The sole purpose of generating revenue while at the same time ignoring the public welfare cannot be legitimate or a legal exercise to approve this special permit. The zoning ordinance right now is 195 pages. There's not one word in the zoning ordinance that says revenue. So, I'm just stating that that is no excuse to say this is why it's going to be approved if a few individuals feel that. Y'all remember in the past, not all of yous, but a few, a few of you that were on the planning board, I believe it was September 2013 at the high school, for approximately four and a half hours, the citizens spoke. And a lot of them told you about the traffic issues and they talked about the dump completely, I'm not going to say it was ignored by y'all, but it's, an individual came out and said, never mind the truth, just give those that don't live here what they want. And this is not what it's about, giving those that live here what they want. It's a new board that's here right now, and I hope you listen to what everybody had to say and take that into consideration. And I respectfully ask you all to vote no for this special permit. And they're not going to lose. They can still build something on that property after the fact. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Peter Walker followed by Jim Ladder.
Yeah, good evening. My name's Peter Walker. I live on Baker Avenue, and I want to stress that because that's not Brimble Avenue. And I just want to say that there are people in Beverly, in addition to the folks who live in the Brimble Avenue neighborhood, who are against the proposal and who urge you to vote against granting the permit, for all the various reasons that you've heard before. I'll add that sympathy for my fellow Beverly citizens who live in the Brimble Avenue neighborhood is one of the reasons I am against the proposal. And I just want to say one last thing, which is that for me, the wonderful thing about Beverly is that we have a vibrant downtown scene. Capit Street is what makes, is really the heart of Beverly, and the magic that we have somehow got on that street that has kept the center of this town alive should be bottled. It should be expanded to Rantoul Street. I'm hoping that that's the priority of the planning board and of the city of Beverly and not creating more strip malls in the outlined sections of the city. So, please do vote against the request for the special permit. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Ladder followed by Myron Hood. Next, no, Mr. Hood after Mr. Ladder.
Thank you for the time. All right, hard to hear and, hard to hear and didn't know what was going on. I just want to rest my opinion with this board. I thought the zoning board did the special permits, but we're here, all right? Bear with me. I don't want an if. That was in the Salem News in January of this year, all right, for Mr. Benevito, which is the traffic guy that told you to accept this, Whole Foods. There certainly, Beverly doesn't have any money. That was his statement, all right? Now, to do the things that was asked to be done, my opinion on what if is driving 58 years in Beverly. I worked 40 years for the city of Beverly in all departments, and what I, I'm a homeowner, and now there's a big hazard from every, for everyone, traffic, sewer, drains, major impact all over the city. Brimble Avenue, six, maybe seven lights, and down on Dunham Road, you have now the Salem News, Dunham Castle. And down on Dunham Road, you have now the Salem News, Dunham Castle, Commons just picked up 55 acres that he's developing for traffic, music theater, Mastranze's, Iron Tree with the trailer trucks trying to get out on the bramble. You have also 128 trying to get out on the bramble, all right? The traffic's going to be a gridlock all over the city. I mean, I wrote all this up, but I just feel to say that if you put a light on Colton Street, for example, you're going to back up the traffic on Essex Street. You've got Kelleher's Pond that flows over. It's going to be icy. Another hazard. You're going to put a traffic light at Herick Street, Otis Road. Mr. Cohen doesn't have permission yet to get into his development for two roundabouts. I'd like to see a roundabout, and I mentioned it before, on 128 where the male annex is in Sawyer Road that will take care of the bottleneck that we're getting on 1A, which is gridlocked. The traffic from Fawley Hill, instead of getting off at 1A, will come down and get off, take the rotary to go into Boston along with Sawyer, all right? I could stay here quite a while and talk, but I don't intend to because other people have to. But another serious problem you're going to have is out on Laurel, Dodge, 1A with the train. You have to wait 10 minutes for people to get on and off the train, all right? And the train ain't even going through Dodge Street, all right? Up where I am on 1A, we've got all this water coming, 63 catch bases. There's seven waterways, one of them a 10-foot that is going to be in Mr. Cohen's plaza, all right? I mean, it's, the city should start waking up and saying, listen, we've got to do something with all this traffic. I've got to deal with four schools on 1A with possibly the new junior high going in. And the thing of it is, all the water going in now is going to go in people's cellars for hazardous. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hood. Mr. Ladder, thank you for your patience. And Don Martin is next.
How do I top that? Thanks, members of the planning board. I didn't prepare any remarks. I'm a rare speaker here. I actually supported the land swap that would have pushed this project further away from North Ridge, I think. And seeing the scope of this project, I stand behind that position. I think even Mr. Cohen would admit that had that happened the way it was designed, it probably would have been better for North Ridge than what's being proposed. That's why I'm here. I'm here to focus on a couple of narrow issues that I spoke with the folks in North Ridge. And there's various opinions throughout that development as there is throughout the city. But I want to speak specifically to the cut on Sawyer Road. And I know they sent a letter and I just want to reemphasize those points. One is, is there any possibility that we can make that an exit only and reduce the width of that cut from 24 to 16 feet? And there's also a general concern with the entire scope of the 24-inch drainage pipe. And I hope both of those issues can be addressed to the satisfaction of North Ridge before you consider this for approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Martin followed by Mr. St. Hilaire.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Don Martin, 27, Berrywood Lane, Ward 5 councillor. Back in '09, I was the only councillor who voted against establishing the IR overlay district for Brimble Avenue. I did so for two reasons. One was it was done for one developer. And more importantly, you didn't have to, quite frankly, you didn't have to be a rocket scientist to figure out that Brimble Avenue was going to be looking at a major retail development in the very near future. Quite honestly, I don't, can't think of a worse possible development than a Whole Foods for this location. It's a car magnet. Build it and the cars will come. And here we are today looking at upwards of 30,000 new car trips per week with 55% of those coming directly from Brimble Avenue. Now, Mr. Cohen at previous public hearings has mentioned, and I quote, "We understand that they are fearful that their neighborhood may be harmed. For many, this is a big, threatening unknown. The impact is not going to be what they fear." I'll tell you quite frankly what the residents fear. They fear that the quality of life that they know today is going to be negatively impacted. They fear that their property values are going to decline. They fear that their public safety is going to be diminished. And they fear that they won't even, in some cases, be able to back out of their driveways. Mr. Cohen goes on to state that "traffic impact on local roadways will be relatively modest. Impact on the neighborhood will be small." The problem is, he doesn't know that. No one knows that. Even the traffic experts would never guarantee or say something like that. And then the question is, and I mentioned this last week at Park and Traffic Commission, what happens if these studies are wrong? What happens if traffic is much worse than we're being told to expect? What do we say to the residents? The residents of Brimble Avenue and the surrounding neighborhoods will suffer the consequences if traffic is as bad as I believe it will be. Brimble Avenue will be collateral damage. Now, it is mentioned also at Park and Traffic that they're requesting a six-month and a 12-month traffic review. Standard procedure, we did that at Walgreens up on Route 1A in North Beverly. The question is, what happens if this project is built and 12 months later, the traffic is much worse? What do we do? What is the backup plan? There is no backup plan. As I mentioned last week, there's no Plan B. There's no going back. The genie is out of the bottle. So we better be sure that we're not going to do some undue damage to the residents of Brimble Avenue and the surrounding neighborhoods. There is no going back. Now, I've been councillor now for almost, well, I'm in my 20th year. My philosophy has always been the same. Neighborhoods must always come first. They must always be our first priority. We must do whatever we can to protect the neighborhoods. And let me be honest, you know, no neighborhood should ever, ever be sacrificed for any developer or for additional tax revenues. Never, never, never. I do have one request. As you vote on this in two weeks, you do so as though you lived on Brimble Ave. I don't mean to, I've got to look this way too. Do so as though you lived on Brimble Avenue. Because quite frankly, if you lived in, say, Ryleside and you don't travel down Brimble Avenue as often as we do, you may not care as much or you may not be as concerned about the traffic or the impact on the quality of life. But please, put yourselves in their shoes. They live there. Whatever happens here and whatever the traffic is, they're going to pay the price. That's going to be their daily life. Put yourselves in their shoes and really think about the impact this project is going to have on them. And regardless of the vote, whichever way it goes, the city needs to do two things. First of all, we need to move to rezone the other side of Brimble Avenue so we prevent any possible retail development in the future. That is, to me, that is the top priority. And secondly, the city must do everything possible to work with the state to fast-track Phase 2. If this development is built, Phase 2 is our only hope. We have to get the traffic off of Brimble Avenue. We have to dead-end Dunham Road after the Brewer household, right before Salem News. We have to. And we can't wait 10 years. 10 years is a lifetime. We have to do it before then. I know Broad Emery mentioned one time, he thought it was four years. That's acceptable. 10 years is not acceptable. Brimble Avenue now is bad. Now you're talking about all this extra traffic generated by this development? It's unacceptable. It's unacceptable. One end of Brimble Avenue to the other is a mess, is a disaster. And finally, I just wanted one comment. A lot of people over the years have asked me, how did 1A become what I call the disaster it is today? And the answer is easy. We let it. Decisions made 20, 30, 40 or more years ago resulted in the mess we have today. Let us spare Brimble Avenue the same fate. Let us, I'm sure you will, let us really think this through. This isn't about, it shouldn't be about revenue. It shouldn't be about helping a developer out. It should be what is in the best interest of the residents of Brimble Avenue and the surrounding neighborhoods. That should be our focus, our only focus. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councillor St. Hilaire.
Appreciate the opportunity to share my thoughts tonight, both as a city councillor at large but also as a resident who grew up in North Beverly. First, I commend the North Beverly Neighborhood Association, the Montserrat Neighborhood Group and all the residents for being involved in this process. It's taken a long time and you've made the most of your opportunities. I view civic engagement as a critical component to good government and their participation has been a good thing for Beverly. I also applaud you on the planning board. You've been very professional. You've made very thoughtful questions, very tough questions. And I know regardless of your decision, residents will feel confident in your process. I'm a proponent of economic development at Grove Beverly's. Local economy, create jobs and increase our tax base. I've supported development projects as a city councillor in Beverly and I agree that this site, which is zoned for development, should and will be developed. The hard part has been finding the right balance to ensure the project is respectful to residents, maintains the character of our neighborhoods and minimizes negative impacts on quality of life. This has been the issue with this project and why there's been such resistance by neighbors. Traffic contributes directly to quality of life for residents. The intersections at both ends of Brimble Avenue receive F ratings by the traffic experts and have been accurately referred to by residents as a nightmare. This project will have thousands of vehicle trips on a daily basis to Brimble Ave. And the proposed traffic improvements do nothing to account for the MBTA train crossings, which complicate these problems even further. And with two public elementary schools and several residential neighborhoods along Brimble Avenue, I feel safety is a legitimate concern. As you know, there are six, you know, conditions for the special permit applications that this must meet in order to be accepted. You know, these are subjective and they're up to you to decide. But like you, I've been listening closely to both sides of this issue for over a year and a half. In my opinion, the traffic volume proposed by this is undue and beyond what we should expect our citizens to accept. I urge you to vote no on the special permit application. CEA can and should develop a project by right that will have a less detrimental effect on the neighborhood. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who hasn't yet signed up that would like to speak? One, anyone else? Two? All right. Why don't you come up and we'll take you in order, both of you. And that will be it, except for we're going to give the applicant one chance to rebut.
My name is Rosemary Broadbent and I'm a resident of North Ridge. And very simply, I would like to say, we were there first. We were built and we were functioning for 30 years before this project was a gleam in anyone's eye. And I would have thought that if Mr. Cohen had done due diligence, he would know that we had, that there was a building that was very close to the property line and he would have known that that was a residence for handicapped people. And he would have adjusted his plan so that there would be enough of a buffer to protect our K Building from traffic noise, exhaust, dumpster noise, trucks, construction vehicles, et cetera. And I think that we're doing this backwards. I don't think we should have to argue against having this project so close to K Building. I think Mr. Cohen should have started from the beginning and said, this K Building is really close to the property line. We better move our project back so that we can build a reasonable buffer. Now, the buffer right now is, I think, 12 feet from the building. When we first saw this project, we were concerned about the trucks going up around the left side of the Whole Foods building. And then there was a curb cut and there was a road there. So there would be, and then the road was 24 feet wide, which was not what we understood from the beginning. It needs to be 24 feet wide if it's going to be a two-way road. And I want to thank Jim Ladder for bringing this up. There is no reason that has to be a two-way road. I know it's supposed to mitigate the traffic going out of the other curb cuts, but that road can be much narrower and be a one-way exit only, right turn only, and give another 6, 8 feet to the buffer between North Ridge, between the K Building and CEA property. Now, I don't know, I don't know enough about the process of granting special permits and I don't know how conditional they can be. I don't know what conditions can be, you know, whether you can grant a permit with these conditions. And I think probably that this one is too detailed. But I want to say one thing. Mueller Associates estimates the volume of traffic on that road. And the aggregate amount is 24 vehicles in, and this is over all the peak hours in the various days of the week, 24 vehicles in and 200 vehicles out per hour. That's not modest. That's an overwhelming volume and I don't see how the people who live in the K Building will be able to tolerate it on top of all the other negative consequences. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker, please identify yourself.
Sorry, I'm a little tall. Good evening. My name is Amy Donovan and I live at Tin Berrywood in North Beverly off of Dodge Street. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. Compared to most of the people here, I'm a relative newcomer. My husband and son and I moved here eight years ago from Virginia. Previous to this, I had lived in Virginia for 37 years. And so I come in with the perspective of somebody who grew up in the DC area and then lived in Richmond, Virginia, where I've seen the impact of strip malls and traffic gridlock. And I would just say that if you're from New England and you haven't been to some other parts of the country, you don't realize how beautiful Beverly and these other surrounding areas are. And I hear the voices here and the concerns and I understand them because I've lived it and I've seen the cycles. Also, I worked for a retail, major big box retailer for 10 years in their corporate headquarters. I worked in, oversaw a large IT department and oversaw business intelligence. So I understand how retailers work. I would encourage this planning board to, if you haven't done so already, to look very closely at the business plan, okay? Retailers, as we know, exist to make money. Okay, retailers, as we know, exist to make money, and if they're brick and mortar, the money comes from people entering the store. And in this community, that means cars. This is not a walking area. And so if you haven't done so, I would encourage you to review their business plan and look at the target demographics and see how that matches up with our community and how many people would actually come in. I have a retail background. I've, I've studied it in graduate education. I, I am certain from looking at the numbers and knowing these communities that a lot of people will need to enter into Beverly to make the business successful and that their business plan is based on that. I'd be shocked if it wasn't. Other points, my son attended North Beverly Elementary for six years. He's now a student at Briscoe. There are a lot of children, elderly, other people that go up and down through these neighborhoods. It's not safe. A lot of, a lot of speeding cars, a lot of traffic. I know we have an unprecedented amount of snow this year, but I can tell you every year, every large snowstorm, and we've had them every year. This is my ninth winter. The sidewalks are not consistently cleared and not cleared on time. And our kids walk to school, as they will tomorrow, but as they have every winter, without sidewalks. What happens when we add another 30,000 cars per week to that? I really ask you to think about that. Some other points. I would encourage you to come to our neighborhoods from 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM and during midday, and from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM. I'd encourage you to go up where Counselor Martin and I live, up off of that part of Dodge Street. And you try, try your best to make it from there, to head down 1A, or try to get over to Brimble. I guarantee you'll wait 10 to 20 minutes to make it from where we live to one of those points. Okay? I also encourage you to do that in the afternoon and to go to, to exit 128 and try to make it to our neighborhoods and see the gridlock we already have. So when we talk about undue traffic burden, I, I'm surprised that this is even a question, to be honest with you, because the traffic is, is miserable. It, it's really bad for a resident, primarily residential neighborhood. So if you haven't done so, I really hope you'll take this seriously and go to each of our neighborhoods. Go up Dodge Street, go up near the McDonald's and the Dunkin', and go to a Brimble Ave. neighborhood, and try to go from one side to the other during the morning, the midday, and the afternoon, and see what we already experience, because the connector road won't solve that for us. And you're taking a pipe, you know, it, you make one pipe bigger. If you don't make the other pipes bigger, you just get the log jam in those other points. It's, it's classic flow and understanding of traffic in any application. So I just, I would encourage you to get out there and experience what we experience and look at the business plan and see, why do they want to be here so badly and how many people do they really plan to draw? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think that ends the public portion of this, and now we'll give the applicant a last chance to speak.
Mr., Mr. Chairman, is there? I'd like to just take two minutes to say something to the board. Is that okay at this time or not?
Why don't you wait till everything's been?
Everything what, at the end of the evening or?
Just following Mr. Alexander.
For the record, Thomas Alexander with offices at One School Street in Beverly, here on behalf of the applicant CEA group. First and foremost, I want to commend this planning board for your thoroughness, your persistence, and your patience in pursuing this process. I'd also like to commend the citizens of Beverly for coming forward with their opinions. This is democracy at its best. I also want to commend those who have not, were not able to come tonight, but have been able to convey their thoughts and opinions via email. I've been doing this for 30 years, both on the side of representing the city and representing projects such as this. And I can honestly say I've never seen such a complete and thorough investigation of a project, from geotech landfill issues to traffic ad nauseum, to drainage. It's, it's, it's been extremely thorough and I think extremely well done. I, I just want to start off with a couple of general, general points. One is the, just for a minute to talk about what a special permit is. You know, the best special permit, sometimes people get them mixed up with variances. I know this board does not do variances, but the variances are when someone is looking to break zoning, to go against what is encouraged by zoning. Special permits are exactly the contrary. A special permit is something that has been deemed desirable by the community to do, but that should be subject to the review and control of the permit granting authority. And that's, that's what we're doing here. This is a process that provides for the review and conditioning of a proposal. The, as you know, the IR overlay district, the purpose is to principally provide for mixed use and commercial development, which is exactly what this is. As you know, this is a mixed-use project with retail and restaurant uses. I won't belabor the six criteria that you've heard that the city needs to go through or the planning board needs to go through, but I would like to go through them fairly quickly, as much as I can. I've done it in much greater detail in the memo that I've provided for you, so that you, I will just try to hit the highlights as I go along here. First of all, this, we must determine that the site is an appropriate location for the proposed use and character of adjoining uses will not be adversely affected. Well, as to the appropriateness, it's, it's already been determined that it is an appropriate thing for there to be mixed-use commercial in the IR overlay district. What remains to be done is to, to review that and to condition it appropriately. Now, this has not been a recent determination of appropriateness for this particular location. The 2002 master plan, which has been cited, and I have several quotes in it, specifically recommended that this area be rezoned for mixed commercial use. And that, and that's, you know, we use that term, master plan. What is a master plan? They're done very rarely, often as long as 15 to 20 years apart, but they're very thorough reviews that involve the whole city, that involve numerous public hearings over typically several years. The city hires a zoning consultant. The planning department itself spends a ton of time on this. And then recommendations are drafted, recommendations are reviewed, recommendations are revised and revised and voted on. And ultimately, the, the master plan in 2002 was a unanimous vote of the planning board, the city council, and ultimately the mayor also signed off on that. So this is a, this is a real determination way back of what should go on at this location. In addition, there have been other determinations of the appropriateness of this location for mixed-use commercial. There was the IR overlay vote in 2009, which the planning board voted on unanimously, and the, the city council voted unanimously overwhelmingly, not unanimously, in favor of that. Then again in 2014, it was voted to expand the IR overlay district, again with this type project in, in mind. Now, that, that proposal, something unusual happened with that. And that was that a referendum was brought about as a result of signatures, which is again, a very appropriate use of the democratic process. And in that vote, there, there's 12 precincts in Beverly. Nine out of the 12 precincts voted in favor of the IR overlay district. So it's a rare opportunity to, to get the sense of the people at large. In addition to the, the vote of the master plan, the two IR overlay votes, the vote of the citizens of Beverly, the design review board reviewed this and voted unanimously to recommend it. And, and the, the design review board did something that's very unusual in my experience in that they, in one night, they reviewed it and approved it, and they were, they were very impressed. I mean, the, and they're obviously charged with a number of things. Aesthetics, drainage, appropriate, appropriateness for the neighborhood, and they were unanimous. The most recent review of this by an independent city group was the Parking Traffic Commission. The Parking Traffic Commission also voted unanimously to, in support of this project. And you know, that's, the Parking Traffic Commission, what is the Parking Traffic Commission? Parking Traffic Commission is made up of a representative from the police department, a representative of the fire department, the executive director of the Chamber of Commerce. And it's also, the chair of it is himself a very accomplished traffic engineer. And these folks reviewed this very, very carefully. The, and at the end of the day, voted to recommend this with a, an agreed-upon mitigation package of $200,000, which I would just point out to you is significantly more than what the city's independent peer reviewer thought the fair share should be for, for the applicants, which was $36,000. But be that as it may, that's been agreed to, and we will abide by that. I'd also like to, to, to give to you for a second a, a letter from Bruce Nardella, former city council president, chairman of the Better for Beverly group. They have produced a, a website that, for people to correspond and to indicate their approval of this project. And I'm just going to have you take a look at that, because... Can you just take a look at that in, in your leisure time, too? Over, over 1,000 people have indicated their support of this project in the city of Beverly. So there's, there's a big number of, of support out there that has, has indicated that they are with this and have not been able to make these hearings. The, the next, the next test is that no factual evidence that property values in the district will be affected. Now, I emphasize the word district because district throughout the zoning ordinance in Beverly is zoning district. So this would be referring to the IR zoning district. And I would draw your attention to the memorandum that I provide you that sets out the, the, six property owners within the IR overlay district, which include medical supplies, office, two gas stations, and convenience shop, Cycles 128, and Tokyo Electron. These, these are the, the, under the terms of IR zoning, that's whose property values should be looked at. The, there's, there's no question that Whole Foods, and I provide you quite a bit of documentation, does have a terrific impact, both on neighboring commercial, which is really what we're looking at here, but also on nearby neighborhoods. The, one study has shown that there's a 17.5% increase in property values for properties that are in the neighborhood of a Whole Foods. So it's, the, certainly the evidence would indicate that property values would actually be improved by this. And in fact, when we first went, the first IR overlay rezoning, it was brought up at the time, that wouldn't it be great if we could get something like Whole Foods at this location? Now, that was, that was not in the cards at the time. It just came to pass, but you know, Whole Foods is a very, very high-end and, and, and terrific property owner. The next that we look at is no undue traffic or nuisance will result. The, now this is, I'm not going to belabor this, but this has been really studies. We had Ron Mueller do a, the study. The city hired a peer reviewer, tech, to review it, and they concurred that the, that with the proposed improvements, that the traffic would be, traffic impact would be minimized. This has also been looked at by Jacobs Engineering, another consultant of the city, and found that the, the traffic would not be undue here. The, and I want you to keep in mind that one of the reasons that this works so well is because of the MassWorks $5 million grant that provides for the two roundabouts. And the MassWorks, those grants, those are, those are not traffic grants. Those are economic development grants. That, that, that grant was applied for and received because the city represented that it would allow for commercial development, specifically at this site. So that this is, that these improvements are specifically tied into this project. What I'd like to do for a minute is just give you a copy of a quick synopsis of the level of surface, level of service before and after for this site, before development and after the development. When I say that, I mean before the build-out of the Whole Foods and also before the build-out of the $5 million MassWorks grant. And if you just take a quick look at this, you can see that we have the weekly AM peak hour, the weekly PM peak hour, the Saturday peak hour. And the level of service analysis shows you, obviously, right around the site that we are going from a level of service of F to a level of service of A due to the MassWorks grant. Most of the other intersections are staying about the same in all scenarios. But again, the, the $5 million grant had this very scenario in mind. The, one other thing that I'd like to, to remind you of is, at the request of the chairman, we did design a by-right project. We did a traffic analysis of a by-right project, which would involve two six-story office buildings and a couple of parking garages. And I, you will see, if you get a chance to go back and look at those, that the peak hour traffic is much worse than what we're proposing today. Why is that? Well, because during Monday through Friday, an office development is going to be letting, taking in traffic and letting out traffic precisely at the moments that people are trying to go to and from work. For the, the, the retail project that we're proposing, it's more, it's more spread out over the day. It doesn't concentrate in those peak hours. It doesn't concentrate in those peak hours. As agreed upon by our traffic engineer and also as signed off on by the peer review traffic engineer, Tech, the traffic impact was estimated to be approximately, on brimble half, approximately 5.5% to 5.9% per day. You know, in looking through some cases that are out there, there's a fairly recent case, BJ's Wholesale versus Hutchings. It's a Superior Court case, so it's an unreported case. But I did provide the site for you. And basically, the judge in that case found that an anticipated 6% increase in traffic would not constitute undue traffic. Next, we want to look at adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for proper operation and maintenance of the proposed use. First and foremost, we have a $5 million grant that is going to provide terrific service, traffic service in the immediate area. The applicant will be providing, and we will agree to, a condition of relocating and replacing the city's 24-inch failed drainage pipe that goes across the property. So that will be a benefit to the city that is longstanding and will, in fact, improve drainage in the area. We will provide a $200,000 traffic mitigation, which we've already talked about, to offset any impact of traffic. And that has been signed off on by the Parking and Traffic Commission. And also, I just would like to reiterate that the drainage has been reviewed by our traffic, excuse me, our drainage engineers, signed off on by the city's peer reviewer. And most recently, Hancock Engineering looked at it for an abutter and concluded that the drainage was more than adequate for the site. The next test is no valid objection from abutting property owners. Of course, there's only one direct abutter, although for zoning purposes, the folks across the street are also considered to be abutters. But they haven't come forward, although one of the owners of the property I see today, Sandy Santin, wrote a letter in support. But the most immediate abutter is Northridge. And the objection that they have raised is the location of our driveway in proximity to their driveway. Our driveway area is 100 feet from theirs. The, as pointed out by Ron Mueller, the requirement for distance between driveways is 50 feet for a collector road and 75 feet for an arterial road. So we're well beyond any requirements for what traffic analysis requires, what the rules of the road, so to speak, require. Also, it was pointed out in Mr. Mueller's response, there'll be no queuing that results at that driveway. There's just not enough cars going in to create a queue. Now, the location of the Northridge building, the closest building, is five feet away, which has been pointed out. That is the result of what's called a hostile 40B application. A 40B, a hostile 40B application is done by a developer to overcome local zoning, so that the developer gets approval to not abide by city rules. Now, the city of Beverly opposed that 40B permit and strongly opposed it. It went all the way to court. And one of the reasons was that the city did not feel it was appropriate to have a residential building so close to what is an industrial use at the time, because of the very result that came about here, that people are going to complain about an historic use, or an historic allowed use, which is next door. So our project is well within zoning setbacks. The closest building on that side is 56 feet. So we're a long ways away. Having said that, we are prepared to provide significant screening for Northridge along the side. I have a document here that shows exactly what we are prepared to do and also would accept this as a condition. So the first page just shows you what it looks like in profile. We'd be providing evergreen trees that would grow quickly and provide a very effective screen. The next page shows K Building and shows how that would sit and how the buffer would sit next to our project. We also have call-out on that page, the green giant arborvitae that would be provided. Lastly, and we've, some of this gets redundant, but it is overlapping, the adequate and appropriate city services will be available. And once again, drainage, $300,000 new pipe, $200,000 for traffic mitigation. The determination by the city's peer reviewers that the facilities for traffic and for drainage are adequate. In conclusion, I just would like to say that this is really a culmination of, and the fulfillment of, a longtime goal for the city of Beverly, going back to 2002, to provide for a high-end, and that's right out of the master plan, a high-end use of this property. And I don't think it gets much higher end than what is proposed. And it's been looked at by independent boards, commissions, reviewers, everyone, from the Planning Board to the Design Review Board to the Traffic and Parking Commission, to the ECDC, the Economic and Community Development Commission, I forgot to mention them, have weighed in in favor of this, and all peer reviewers. So we would respectfully request that the Planning Board give due credence to the various reports and recommendations of many, over many years, and grant this special permit. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Ogden, you might want to stay. Did you have some points or? I actually have a couple of questions. Do other members have questions? Am I the only one? Go ahead.
I just, I wanted to know if you had in any single location, a list of the conditions that you would be prepared to accept. Is that in any one document that we can put our hands on?
Well, I can certainly, off the top, tell you that we would agree to replace the 24-inch failed drainage pipe, that we would agree to $200,000 in mitigation for traffic, and that to be paid upon issuance of the building permit, or application for the building permit. Also, the buffer that would be provided next to the Northridge that we've provided here. Yeah, well, obviously, we build in accordance with the plans.
The plans include the screening that you just handed out to us.
And obviously, the...
That's, that was the big one. Yes, subject to the completion of the brown, absolutely. And also, the obtaining of the curb cut permit from DOT. Yes.
Catherine?
Thanks. I just had one question regarding something you mentioned about the $5 million grant from the MassDOT and Jacob's Engineering, and I believe it's Mr. Emery.
Yes, right, Emery.
Does that, do those road improvements take into account this projected, this project?
Yes, it does. Absolutely. And much more than this. It took into account many other potential projects down the road.
Okay. Thank you.
I just have a few. I'd like to clarify the construction timetable, because I think various statements have been made along the way as to when this would be built and what would if things go backwards. So my understanding is that the project is not going to be constructed until two things have occurred. One is the interchange has been completed by the state. Is that correct?
Well, we, not completed, we start.
All right. But you wouldn't start until the curb cut permits.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, yes, absolutely. Would not start, could not start.
So there's no possibility of this being constructed and the permit's not coming through?
No. No, in fact, you know, the city would not give us a building permit if we couldn't, if the, if a condition is that we have that permit. So we wouldn't do it anyways, but...
That's what I thought. I just wanted to be sure everybody understands.
Yeah.
And this may be a question for our staff, but the question was raised about the size of the parking spaces. I presume those are our city's required dimensions.
Yes, they are the city's required dimensions.
Thank you. And lastly, I'm intrigued by the proposal by the Northridge people, or at least by one of them, that the Sawyer Road entrance be made an exit only. And we weren't part of that process. That actually went through the Parking and Traffic Commission and was sort of handed to us at a meeting. So we just accepted that that's the way it was going to be. But in my own mind, I'm questioning, why does that need to be both in and out?
Ron, do you want to address that?
Mr. Chair, in our consultations with the city's peer reviewer, with Parking and Traffic Commission, and also with the traffic engineers at MassDOT, there was the general principle presented that it would be most advantageous to the project and to the public interest to disperse your traffic in as many different directions as possible in order to minimize the impact in any one direction. So it was based on that general principle that we've currently designed it both in and out. I must grant you that, you know, we will be continuing our ongoing process with MassDOT. And if MassDOT approved, eliminated the right turn in on Sawyer, that we, as the owner developers, would not object to that. But MassDOT is controlling the access in that area. And as I say, we've been operating on the general principle that they have enunciated at this point.
So has MassDOT reviewed this plan yet and given some preliminary kind of approval of that particular entrance, exit?
Only in the most general terms. The message that we got from MassDOT is they want to hear from the city first, if, as and when the city grants approvals for this project, then they would continue their review in earnest. But at the moment, they are holding back until they hear from the city.
I just would like to emphasize that the Chairman of the Parking and Traffic Commission, Rich Benevento, was strongly in favor of the, you know, the right turn in and out, just because it provides more accesses to the property and it keeps, it's just a more efficient use of it. So I know that he was very strongly in favor of that.
I see the efficiency. I think I'm trying to balance that with the effect on the immediate neighbor. And it seems to me the only difference in the efficiency side of it is that cars coming north on Sawyer Road would have to go through the first circle to get in, as opposed to cutting in right on Sawyer Road. And that does not seem to me to be a great sacrifice. On the other hand, I can see the Department of Transportation's concern to keep as much traffic off the connector road as possible.
Exactly, yes.
So there's a balancing the two.
Yes.
Maybe we'll talk to Mr. Benevento more about that.
Okay.
But thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions for members of the Planning Board? Mr. Miller?
Question has come up tonight about the what-if scenarios. We've received a lot of traffic estimates of what-if, or what we can expect to happen as far as traffic. And it was also mentioned that six- and 12-month traffic reviews are pretty customary. What kind of accuracy can we expect from traffic prognosis? Maybe Mr. Mueller could address this.
Cases that I've seen where the project actually generated exactly the volumes that we projected. Every other time, every other instance, the original traffic projections were far higher than what the actual numbers ended up being. And I'm talking all retail projects.
When you say far higher, what kind of percentage?
It ranges, sometimes as high as 50% more traffic, in other cases, 25%. I don't recall specifically the numbers, but they certainly have been pretty significantly overestimated in most cases. One case I can recall was a Walmart Supercenter in Northridge, which actually generated the volumes that were projected.
Okay. Mr. Chair, a follow-up? The question was raised whether the extra traffic from five schools was factored into the traffic studies?
Correct. We didn't specifically look at the schools that are proposed. What we did do is add an annual background traffic growth rate to the existing volumes that were counted. And we do that to account for smaller projects, population growth in the area. So those increases should easily account for any additional traffic from those schools.
Can I just interject? There's not five, there's not five new schools that we're talking about here. We're talking about five existing schools. And that was in the underlying traffic that you did, right? Yeah, so that's already in the numbers.
Okay, thanks. Because that was referred to by one of our members, one of the members of the community as extra traffic. And I wasn't clear how that was extra traffic, but it has been factored in.
I believe the schools are the North Beverly Elementary, the Hannah Beverly High School. There's also the, up on the Sawyer Road there, there was a special needs school that is closed, but a new one is opening in the same location. And I believe maybe the fifth one was Shore Country Day School or...
Kind of far down the road, but maybe. It was also stated that, it kind of assumed that increased traffic will increase response times. Increased traffic, and we concede that there'll be increased volume, somewhere around 6% at peak. But it was, one of the speakers said that increased traffic will increase response times. Is there any, is that correct?
Well, response time by emergency vehicles is a function of the delays that it takes to get through intersections. In the level of service chart that was handed out, it clearly shows that we have some very severe F-level intersections, most notably at the connector road, the two ends of the connector road, with the MassWorks project and with all this additional growth in traffic that we're assuming, including the Two Cummings Project. Background traffic growth rates, this particular project, those service levels will go to Level A. So if anything, response time should be substantially reduced when you improve the delays at these intersections.
I just want to point out that the Parking and Traffic Commission has a member from the, the Traffic Sergeant for the Police Department and the, on the... the -- the traffic sergeant for the police department and the guy who heads up the fire prevention, who both reviewed and signed off on this proposal.
Okay, thank you. I guess my real point was, is this good science? That's the question that keeps coming up. Is it good science? Have we got good prognostication of what we're going to get after the fact?
I can understand the residents' concern about the what-ifs. If the projections weren't accurate, you know, what's the Plan B? I've heard this a number of times now today. And I guess my only response to that is, and you've heard me say this plenty of times throughout these hearings, is when I do these traffic studies and these traffic estimates and these analyses, I use very conservative assumptions. I don't try to reduce the impact of the project to make things look good. I look at it from a perspective of worst-case scenario. If this project really generates these volumes of traffic that I'm putting out there in the traffic study, then this is how things will operate. So I think I'm certainly very comfortable in saying to you and to the residents here that things will be better than what I'm predicting in my traffic study, not worse.
Okay, thank you all. Members of the public, I'd like to thank you again for coming to these mini-hearings. We've tried to hear everybody. I want to assure you that every comment that was made was listened to. We may have had deadpan faces. Apologize for that, but we're soaking up everything that's been said. We'll consider everything that was said. I know it's difficult to come to these meetings and speak your mind if you're not used to doing it. So kudos for that as well. And I do appreciate the comments that were made. I think we've tried to make this as fair and balanced a process as possible. And obviously, we have a tough decision to make, which we'll think hard about in the next couple of weeks. And we'll be back on the 24th to make our decision. I'd like a motion to close the hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to close the public hearing on the Brimble Avenue project.
Seconded by Mr. Mack. All in favor? Hearing is closed. Thank you all. And we do have some other business, so I'd ask those of you who are not staying for that to move out to the hallway. Thank you very much. We'll take a two-minute recess.